Good evening.
Good evening, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience. Many of you may have heard or saw next door in that my husband had a very serious fall and fractured his back and hit him on the head. So he's in the hospital and I just went and gave him his dinner. And he's doing better. He's improving. But thank you for your patience tonight. Thank you. I'd like to call a meeting to order. The Borough of Yaden, Delaware County, Pennsylvania. Borough Council Legislative Meeting for this 30th. If you'll stand down, please follow that. I'm Sergeant Hughes. To the choir of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well. I will also announce that there is a need for a session, a recess rather, in the next half hour. Some important legal information that Mr. Boggs needs to communicate to all of the council members here. Legal matter pending. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Mayor Rowan K. Cassidy.
President.
President, Sharon Counsel Harris.
Present.
Vice President, Erin Johnson. She was on the phone, unfortunately was disconnected. Counselor Talia Jones-Waters.
Present.
Counselor Carlett Brooks.
Present.
Thank you. Counselor Cole Beatty.
Present.
Counselor Latoya Monroe.
Present.
Counselor Leanna Roeklau.
Here.
Representative, Mr. Mark Muncher's office. Mr. Boggs?
Present.
Thank you. Our Finance Director, Mr. Na'vi Snickles.
Present.
And our Tax Collector, Ms. Hughes. Our Engineer, our Engineer Representative, Megan, Joe Ficuso. That concludes the roll call, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Dodson. For Citizens Forum, for agenda items only, please limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, Yaden Borough, governing body, family, friends, and guests. First off, I'm letting anyone and everyone know who needs to hear this, do not overtalk me or try to cut me off during my three minutes up here. I'm not leaving this podium until I finish saying what needs to be said.
Sir, sir, you have three minutes like everybody else.
You said what, you heard what I said.
You have three minutes like everybody else.
After three minutes, I'm out. I told you that.
Thank you.
Stop wasting my time, I told you that.
Don't take his time by talking.
The buzzwords, healing and unity, have been thrown around these halls frequently as of recent. I believe we can all agree that when healing, sorry, that healing and unity are very much needed here in Yaden. On the other hand, I feel that when the words healing and unity are currently spoken here by some, the underlying message behind those words are to forget about blatant, dishonorable, cowardly, childish, wicked, and unnecessary transgressions. The underlying message by some seems to be to forgive, forget, and to move on with absolutely no closure. With that understanding, certain cowardly transgressions have allowed to continue unchecked, even when brought to the attention of certain state and county officials. Some of these occurrences as recently as last weekend, but another other than your son, ma- Madam President. Even when brought to the, sorry, I hear far too many instances of residents who are mostly our elders and women are afraid to go outside after dark or afraid to leave their homes, period. My own mother mentioned this to me after the municipal lot shooting. Some of our elders and women have stopped coming to these meetings with concern for their safety. One of the major qualities of leadership seems to be lacking here is accountability. Accountability starts at the top. Leadership defines the culture, and if you want to create a culture of accountability, then it starts with leadership. Counsel President, you need to model the behaviors that you want to see in your organization. You, Counsel President Harris, are accountable for any failures as well as any successes that this administration may have. I quote my all-time favorite historical figure in saying that if you stick a knife in my back nine inches and pull it out six, there's no progress. If you pull it all the way out, that's not progress. The progress is healing the wound that the blow made. They won't even admit the knife is there. If you need an example of what happens when you try to move forward without accounting for or acknowledging past transgressions, you need to look no further than the United States and its relationship with slavery. That is a gigantic can of worms that we don't have time to touch on. My point being is that there can be no true healing or unity without going through the right steps or process. A house can be built on an unstable and incomplete foundation, will eventually crumble. I'll close with something that I remember having to explain to my goddaughter back when she was around three years old, going through the I'm sorry phase. To her, I'm sorry meant absolute absolution from God. In her mind, it gave her free rein to perform the same action that got her into trouble in fir-, sorry, into trouble in the first place, such as running up on you out of nowhere and kicking you in the shin. During that phase, I would explain to her time and time again, an apology is empty and meaningless unless it is accompanied by changed behavior.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Leslie Dix. I live at 903 Bell Avenue, and I'm at this meeting tonight. I've been in contact with Mike, who is a part of the managing office. The problem is the cross-section on Bell Avenue and Rundell. The infrastructure there is severely damaged and causing the houses to shake. So my concern, I contacted Aqua, did my due diligence, contacted Pico, contacted the Borough. Aqua and Pico said it's the Borough's responsibility to take care of the infrastructure. If Aqua does work to their main, Pico does work to their main, they pay the Borough to repair the street. So I'm here asking for you all to put in the budget to get that repaired. I currently have contractors, I have fifteen, seven, $21,000 worth of work that I have to have done. My house is shaking. That's a problem. I don't want to be on the news where you say, you know, house collapsed because of poor infrastructure in the Yaden Borough. I've been out here 16 years, I pay my taxes, I try to be a good citizen. No, I don't attend all the council meetings, and you probably know why, but I'm here and I'm going to start attending the council meetings again. No, because you all need to see more than just the folks that normally come. Because we need to hold you all accountable, and you all need to know that we support you when you're doing the right thing, that of course is going to benefit us in the end. So I just, just really petition you all. The contractors are coming out in April to do the work, but if I get the work done and the street's not fixed, I'm throwing my good money at the bad money because it's still going to unstable the foundation. So I think this is.
I'm going to make an exception to our rule. Mr. Dodson has a comment for you.
You're Rundell and McDade?
Yes, right there, the intersection, Bell Avenue's at the top, right there, that fork in the road.
That, that road is scheduled to be repaired this year.
Okay, but when? See, I, and let me, not to be rude, I've been in contact before Mike, it was someone else that I was dealing with last year. And I didn't just start doing that this year. I was patient, and now it's to the point where now that I have the contractors coming out, I had to save up my money, and now it's like, okay, I'm paying out all this money, yes, because it's my house, I own it, you know, but if I'm paying taxes, and those taxes are supposed to do infrastructure to make sure that the houses, and not just my house, I'm quite sure it's probably other folks, if you drive through Yaden, all the, a couple other streets probably need to be repaired as well. But right now, my concern is in front of my house that needs to be repaired. So for you to tell me that it's for this year, that's not good enough.
Ma'am, let me try it this way.
Well, wait a minute, because I get three minutes, thank you.
You just said three minutes are up.
So.
But you can talk, you can go ahead and say what you say.
So it sounds like you don't want to sign the paperwork to get the work done.
What I wanted to say, if you'd be kind enough to leave me your phone number, our engineer is not here this evening, I would call the engineer on your behalf and ask, when is that street scheduled to be, so you don't spend your money in advance. I'll ask the engineer, when is your street scheduled to be repaired? And if the street is repaired, then you can spend your money to have your home.
That's the plan.
If you'll give me your address.
Because when I, when I talked to Mike.
Your phone number, excuse me.
When I talked to Mike, he said he was going to expedite the request before you all, you know. I don't know if you all have seen it or whatever, but that's why I'm here, because he's been telling me, yes, 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 yes. And now it's like, no, I'm not going to wait anymore, I'm going to get on the bullhorn. If I have to write a letter all the way to the White House, that's what I'll do. Because really, it's frustrating, and I know you probably say it's not a major point to you, but guess what? Next week it'll be your house. And, and you have the option to sign off, to get somebody to bid to do it. I don't. I petition the council to please expedite my request to have someone come out within the next 30 days to make that repair. Why? Because the weather is now nicer, and I know contractors come out to do street work once the winter season's is over and the ground starts to warm up. So I'm petitioning you all, please.
So I have a question.
Please sign the necessary paperwork.
Counsel President, I have a question. So is the, is the house, you're saying that you're, that they, have they done a study that it's the infrastructure below, or are you saying that because the road is uneven?
Aqua came out. I called Aqua because, you know, the water mains in front of my house. So I'm like, okay, condensation over a period of time, you know, the ground shifts, and ground shifts, period. So Aqua came out, I had, I called them twice to come out to make sure. They said it's not us, they said it's the Yaden, it's the sewer line. So I have the water main here, and then right here is the sewer line, and then over here is the gas line. So I called Pico. Pico was out on Friday, and I said, you need to tell me what's going to walk me through this, this design here, because Aqua said it's not them, the Borough says it's not them, and you're telling me that it's not you. So you and Aqua are telling me it's the Borough. So that's why I'm here. So they have, they said, this is what happens, when Aqua comes out to clean their main or do whatever it is they do, you know, to their system, or Pico comes out to do whatever they do. When they dig up the street and they put it back, they pay the Borough or give the Borough the money to hire someone to come in and repair the road.
So are you saying that the road is?
Where's the money to repair the road?
Okay, so I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm understanding. I have two questions.
Okay.
So one would be, did either one of them provide you with a report that may be helpful for our engineer?
What type of report?
Like when they came out, did they give you any? If they didn't, it's fine, I'm not saying you should.
No, they didn't give me anything in writing.
That's okay.
I believe, I believe Aqua, the first time, contacted whomever the engineer is at the Borough.
Okay, and are you saying that it's the uneven road that's causing your house to shake, like when cars drive over the uneven road?
Yes.
Okay. But when you said infrastructure, I'm thinking that sinkhole, something falling down below.
But the infrastructure is not just a sinkhole. A sinkhole can be created for the lack thereof maintenance of the infrastructure, which is the streets.
So you're just talking about paving of the street, right?
Digging up and making it, right. Now, they dig up. I don't know what's going on with that sewer line, you know, that may open up a whole different thing, because I don't recall since I've been living there if any work has been done to clean or maintain that sewer line that's there. That, I don't, I don't know who to talk to about that.
So surface paving is something that should absolutely be simple and?
No, it should be.
That's what I'm saying, it should be.
Ms. Dix, we'll, we'll get back to you with solid answers for the engineer. He's going to be the best person to answer all of it.
What's the engineer's name?
His name is Joe Ficuso.
Joe.
Yeah, well, we have your number, Mr. Dodson is on the.
I have it on, I put it on the information on the paper.
It's on the sheet, yeah, we have it on the.
I'll follow.
Okay, so what, what, seven days, five days?
No, no, no. We're talking about tomorrow.
I will let you know what the process is for your street, what the issue is for your street, and when they hope to complete construction on your street by tomorrow.
Okay.
Fair enough?
Yeah, that sounds fair. Yes. If not, I will follow that up with you.
Counsel, Counsel Jones-Waters has a comment for you.
Excuse me, Ms. Dix. Quick question. You said you spoke with someone last year.
Yeah, whoever was with the Borough before Mike.
That was Jeff?
Jeff, yes.
Yeah, Jeff was.
So what was the outcome of those conversations?
The, the same thing, right? Oh, Ms. Dix, we hear you, we'll get someone out there, we'll do a temporary repair until we can get someone out to do permanent. I was like, okay, temporary, I know what that is, come, you put something over it that's thick enough until you can actually get the necessary work done. That never happened. So when he left and I called, because they have the same number, now Mike's picking up, he's like, Jeff's not here in the morning. I'm like, oh, wait a minute, he told me X, Y, and Z. Mike said, oh, yeah, okay, we're going to do this. It never happened. So I'm calling Mike, like every week, like you said, you said something's going to happen.
Glad you came tonight.
So there I am.
Thank you. So I, I have more of a recommendation than a question. I recommend you put this in writing. Put it in an email tonight.
Okay, who do I send it to?
Send it to the Borough Manager.
Okay.
And?
Can I get that email address, because I can do that.
Absolutely. Would you like to give her your address, Mr. Dodson?
It's I.Dotson.
I?
I.Dotson.
As in Isaac?
Mm-hmm, yes, as in Isaac.
No, I'm not being, no, I'm not being facetious. I do that.
It's okay.
To make sure.
It's I, it's I.Dotson.
Now, can I see if somebody else on it?
I was getting ready.
Now we're talking business.
I also was going to recommend that you CC all counselors.
Ah, okay. Now where can I get all of the emails at?
Once you go online, it'll, it'll feed. It'll feed, it'll feed on the website.
And this way you will have something in writing.
Thank you. And if I have to get something in writing from Pico, I can do that on.
Well, not, let's just start. It's not necessary. We'll do it from here. Thank you.
Thank you.
And any follow-up should be in writing.
Yes, I got you.
Nothing verbal.
Thank you. Thank you.
Elton Nicker? Ms. Elton Nicker? Ms. Elton Nicker? I hope I pronounced your, your name correctly, I'm sorry. L, L. Did I mess up? I'm sorry. Please forgive me.
All right, it's just funny. It's funny. It's no, I'm not offended, but my issues here, I want to speak about quality of life.
Can you hear?
No, just move it down.
Move it down, move your mask down.
Your mask.
You don't have to move your mask. You don't have to move your mask.
Monkeypox, I don't think.
We can hear, we can hear you, sir.
Anyway.
We can hear you, into the microphone.
Okay. Nice to meet you, new chief.
Yes.
Doing a great job. I don't have anything too negative to say except for safety issues in the community. I know we've been having a few issues, and I know myself. I've been, I have videos, I have stalkers, I don't know why, because all I do is try to fight this cancer that's in me that I brought back with me, and I stay in the house and heal myself. But I have stalkers, I have people behind my house, in my yards, coming up to my front door, the same cars, and I put this out every time I come. I'm a vet. I had a very specific job in the military, and I do have the ability to do bodily harm to people, but that's not where I want to go. So I know the cops, and if I call them, they're there within 45 seconds to a minute. You have great response time with that, but if y'all catch somebody back there, I need to find out why. If I catch somebody in my property, I need to find out why. I have a rock wallet. I can detain them if I need to, but it's not going to be pretty. I don't want to go there. But that's one issue. I had another issue with diversity training, because we have people with similar skin and similar hues, but just because we the same kin don't make us, I mean, the same skin don't make us the same kin. You keep messing my name up even after I told you five times, Ma'aluma Tunaka Elf. I say it in my native tongue, you won't understand. But that's my name and that's my title, and I earned it. So please don't chop it up. But we have safety issues. I know you just on the job and I'm not putting that on your back, but it started here first. And I already have holes in my window from, uh, 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 people doing things and, listen, I don't like to feel unsafe. I have PTSD. I do not like to feel unsafe. Thank you, just, just by the way, again, my name is Ma'aluma Tunaka Elf. I did want to talk about other quality of life, and I'm running for mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I've been living on, at 811 Raider Avenue since 1987. I had an inspector come out because there's gaping holes, cracks in my walls, and I had an inspector come out today, and he said it's $30,000 worth of damage. The, the foundation underneath my house, he said it's no good. The front of my porch, my front bedroom, is like a sliding board going that way, and it's a big huge crack that has been growing over the years. And every contractor I had to come out, they said, do the outside before you do the inside. I had a guy to come say to point the bricks, but when I got the inspector to come today, he said the foundation underneath the house needs, he has to dig a hole underneath the walls of the house to fix the foundation. I called last year, there's a hole from the curb in the street, it's a hole, and the water's just going down, and I was told that that's my responsibility to fix that as well. Now I know that in the back of my house, there's nowhere for the water to drain, there's no drainage, no, the water just sits in front of the back of my house. And I know years back, you all came around and y'all gave out citations to pave the driveway. The driveway is damaged as well. Everybody driving in Yaden, I think that has something to do with the foundation, too. Now, I went, I tried to get the neighbors to come together, and we all do the driveway together, but me and my neighbor behind me on Conale, we the only ones fixed our driveway because I didn't want my truck to be damaged. So I want to know what the Borough, what part of the responsibility is the Borough's, because I don't think, because my, the foundation of my house is sinking, and eventually it's going to collapse like they did up in Philly and Logan, all those houses collapsed. So somebody needs to get out there, and I called up here and asked, is anybody up here can go and inspect it? They said, oh, no, it's your responsibility to pay an inspector to come. So fortunately, I found BQ, they said we do free estimates, and they came out and they said the whole wall, they had to do all the way around the house to fix the foundation underneath the house.
Mr. Dodson will get in touch with you tomorrow.
And Steph, you better know that you're not the only property.
Yes, because I, I spoke to other of my neighbors and they couldn't come up here, but my neighbor next door, 809, 807, 813, they had brick work done on the back of their house, and the bricks are still falling off the back of 813.
Ma'am, as Counsel Roeklau said, tomorrow, send it to me in email. I'll send it to all the counselors, I'll reach out to the engineer, and I'll have an answer for you.
Okay.
Well, actually, that is not what I said. What I said was, put your concerns in an email to the Borough Manager and carbon copy the counselors. You just heard her concern. So the same courtesy you gave to Ms. Dix, she should also, Ms. Stephanie?
And I, I emailed you last year about that, that street. Where the hole was in the street, and you told me that I had to fix it myself. That's my, that's my to-do.
Ma'am, I tell you, I will address your issue to the best of my ability, and I did try to treat you with the same respect as the first person who stood up there. I may not have gotten it right from the counselor, but I will do the same thing for you as I will do for the first person.
But also put it in an email.
Good evening. I have questions. I'm not used to reading the AP lists.
Give us a mic, please.
I have questions. I'm not used to reading the AP lists until recently, but in December, we were told that that was the final balance for the Valori Group.
Exactly.
And I see in January, twice, and in March, that we had expenses of $1,010.16 for the Valori Group. One was for ads and travel, one was a system-generated voucher, and one was, the latest one in March, was an expense for police search. So I don't know why we still have these expenses, and I would like to know why. My other concern is my neighbors, when I come back from these meetings, they want to know how they can get copies of these AP lists. Now I've asked before, I've made copies, but I can't do my whole block, so I need to know how they can get that. My other concern is Keystone, the task collector, she's not here? I was doing my grandson's taxes. I don't know who sends the names to Keystone. I couldn't do his taxes because his name was reversed. So I had to call Keystone, and they had to correct his name, and they said it originates here. So I need to find out who is submitting that information. This is his first year working, he's 19. So next year, when I do his taxes, I won't have this problem. And that's, that's it.
I have a question. So, thank you for that. So I think Ms. Lee should receive an answer, especially with respect to the tax question, who is responsible for that, so that she can follow up and have it addressed?
I'm very surprised, Ms. Lee, that Keystone told you it starts here at the Borough. Employers actually report to Keystone, the Borough does not report to Keystone. Keystone, under Act 511, which is a state statute, designates the county, the Delaware County Tax Collection Committee, as the organization that oversees our earned income tax. So if any, if, if they say it comes back here, I would say we'll go back to that Tax Collection Committee, which the Borough does have representation on, but employers are responsible to report on a quarterly basis, all of their employees to Keystone Collection Group.
That's what they told me, they reversed it, they put his last name, Lee, first, and his first name last, and when I went into the screen, I was blocked, and I had to call the 800 number, and they said it originated here, so I had no idea.
And as it relates to your other question, I believe you said on the January, there was a, the, the charge was on there twice. If you ever see a charge on an AP list twice, sometime, well, most, all, all of the time, it's a reverse, so it shows that it was paid, council did vote to take that off, so then you will see it come out. So it's like a debit and a credit for that particular in which, when you see it twice on the list.
But it's back on.
And it is back on. Again, any counselor, any department head, and I did get your message, Ms. Anna, any department, I believe you, did you get a message?
I might have, I remember that.
Any department head, any council member can request that something be presented for council to approve on the AP list. So that's why it's back on this evening. There was, at a public forum where council, the majority of council decided to remove it from the list, so it couldn't be paid until it comes back before the body again to be approved, to be paid if council desires. So that's why it's presented here this evening, because someone put in a request for it to be approved, and again, it's at the discretion of the majority of council if they so desire to approve it this evening.
Well, just my confusion is, because December is at final payment, and then I saw the additional payments, and I didn't understand why December was a final payment.
No, I, I agree that if my memory serves me correctly, the December final payment was specific to the actual study in the search for the chief, and then the payment that came in in January were for reimbursements for, I believe, social media, marketing, and travel.
And also for police chief search twice. It was twice.
Right, and if it was on there twice, it's because we put it in, and then when council decided to take it off, we have to put it, we have to reverse it from the system, it generates back on the next AP list, so you'll see it in and out, so that you have the proof that we did actually reverse that charge and that check was voided.
Okay.
So if, can I ask?
So if, can I ask, Mr. Nichols, if we are, if we take a vote on a matter, how is it that one person can just request that this matter keep, put it, be placed on the AP list over and over again? If we took a vote to take it off, and you know, it just, it just feels disingenuous to, like you're trying to, not you particularly, but like it's trying to be slid in without notice if it just keeps reappearing after it's been voted no?
So again, from our, from the finance department standpoint, when people put requests in, if it checks the box, meaning it meets all the compliance checkpoints, it comes here for council to vote because ultimately council votes on. In this particular case, I can tell you that it was asked to be on the prepaid side. And that was denied from the finance office because council voted at a public forum to remove it from the list. And a legal opinion, I did get one to satisfy some questions that had come up. The only way that if, the only way that you can pay it is if you bring it back to the body and order for it to be voted on again in a public forum, because it was voted in a public forum for it to be taken off. I don't think you can, and Mr. Boggs, you can jump in here. This is the first time that this has happened, but I don't think it will continue if it doesn't pass tonight, the back and forth.
So who requested that it be put back on?
Just a moment. Excuse me.
Who requested that it be put back on?
Yeah. And Mr. Boggs, you can, you can, you can add to the, to the comment here. If a vendor, a vendor submits a bill for services provided to the borough, the council cannot arbitrarily decide not to pay the vendor. So if it's a legal matter, if the vendor is denied payment, then the vendor has recourse to bring some legal action against the borough. If the vendor did the work that he submitted an invoice for, you, any vendor cannot, you cannot, the council cannot arbitrarily decide you're not going to pay that vendor unless there's some irregularity.
So I have, it was a vote.
So I actually have a question. So my question would be, just like Council Monroe indicated, that invoice was voted down.
So it should have.
So it should not have come back to this AP list. If the vendor resubmitted the same duplicate invoice that was voted down, there was a reason why it was voted down. One of the main reasons was this particular contractor said he was not going to charge for traveling.
Yes, exactly.
He said it is on video.
Yes.
Okay. He also, with respect to the advertising, okay, we never, well, I never seen a contract. I would have assumed whoever signed the contract did their due diligence to include in that contract, your police search and includes advertising as well. Not that we were going to be billed separately. I don't know what the contract looked like. And that's what happens when you're not given the proper information.
And Councilor, to the Council President's point, and this, you can check down this and the lawyers over there, a government official can obligate a municipality. And if a vendor, vendor services, we are obligated to pay them. This situation, if my memory serves me correctly, we both, well, I don't, I don't vote, but you all voted to remove it from the AP list because of the comment made at a public forum that you weren't going to be charged for the travel. Because the check included the travel and the advertising fees, we had to vote to take the entire thing off. The proper thing that should have been done, because I did review the contract, and it does say that we're to pay him for advertisement, is to submit an invoice just for the advertisement. If he did, in fact, because I wasn't present for that meeting, say that he wasn't going to charge him for travel. In my professional opinion, based off of this contract, you do owe him for the advertising.
Advertising. But that was not, that's not what was submitted on this AP. This AP was for advertising and for travel. So that was an improper invoice because he said he was not going to charge for travel. I do agree. If he paid for advertising, okay. I didn't see the contract. I would love to have seen the contract. Then I would have been able to speak on it, you know, more efficiently. But because we weren't provided that, we can only go by what we know.
Good. Next, Liz.
There are so many questionable expenses on the AP list and on the agenda. Three minutes is not enough time to even mention all, all of them. The lawyer fees are outrageous. This is what happens when Sharon keeps adding lawyers to payroll. We're paying for four lawyers plus a hearing officer for Sharon Council Harris's personal appeal of restore. We're paying $250 an hour, $250 an hour for every single one of them, every time they have a conversation with each other. If all five of them are in a room together for an hour, we pay five times $250, $1,250. This for an appeal the lawyer told us had virtually no chance. The Valori Group submitted $1,010 last month for travel expenses, even though travel expenses were excluded. Is this $1,010 really to pay Valori for that side job of coming to St. Michael's Church for the secret interviews that were held there for the position of chief of police? Interviews that were conducted away from Borough Hall in secrecy from our elected officials? Talia selected eight residents to decide who the final three candidates would be. These eight residents were selected without a vote of council. I filed a right to know request for information about Talia's secret police chief search committee. Isaac Dotson ignored my request. I was forced to file an appeal with the Office of Open Records. After hours of correspondence over the course of a couple of months, I won that appeal. The Office of Open Records released a final determination ordering the borough to release the information about the secret committee. Instead of following the order, Sharon told Mr. Boggs to file a civil appeal at the media courthouse. She is so desperate to keep this information about Talia's corruption from coming out before the election, that she has ordered Mr. Boggs to file a frivolous appeal. On our dime, the taxpayers have already paid over $2,000 for this simple question of ours. Who were the eight residents? How were they selected? And what guidelines were they given? Such simple questions. Why are Sharon and Talia so very desperate to prevent residents from having an answer? And finally, why is there no motion to hire full-time police officers on tonight's agenda? Truck drivers are prohibited from working 18 hours at a time. Why is Sharon forcing our police officers to work 18 hours at a time? Sharon, you're no good for this neighborhood. Neither is your family. Thank you for the update about Mr. Harris. I was very concerned about him after that incident with your son.
I have a, I have a question. Ms. Alex Navich, I'm sorry. I'm asking to be recognized as I have a question. So I'm going to ask the question anyway, because we weren't permitted to ask questions of other residents.
You're, you're out of order, Councilor.
So I received an email from you. And I was just wondering if anyone else was able to respond to your email? Because I understand that, you know, you were, you feel that you were.
You are out of order, Councilor Monroe.
Thank you. Thank you for acknowledging that. But that doesn't mean that we continue to talk over one another.
Councilor Monroe, you're out of order.
Thank you for acknowledging it. But that doesn't mean that we continue to talk over one another.
You're violating the code of conduct, Councilor.
We were able to.
You are violating the code of conduct.
Let me ask you, are we violating the code of conduct?
You are, Councilor.
Are we violating the code of conduct by having Talia Jones Waters videotape me?
Councilor.
Talia Jones Waters is videotaping me here.
You are out of order, Councilor.
Did we vote not to have our video cameras out? When we have cameras here.
Councilor.
And Council Jones Waters is videotaping me.
Councilor, you're out of order.
We were asking questions of all of the other candidates, of all of the other residents. We were able to ask questions.
Councilor, you're violating the rules. And you know the rules.
So are the rules, so the rules are also that Council Jones Waters should not be facing her camera at me recording. Can you please address that? And then I have asked properly to, I have asked properly to be recognized. And you're refusing to recognize me.
It is prerogative of the chair to maintain order. That means order from you.
So why are you not maintaining order amongst your, your colleagues? She is videotaping me while I'm trying to ask a question. And I respectfully ask to be recognized to ask a question.
If I don't recognize you.
But you recognize every one.
You must remain silent.
I must not. This is the people's court. This is not a court.
This is not a political forum.
You are not a judge. So she is continuing to record me.
You are creating a political forum.
I am not creating a political forum. One of our residents sent us all an email about her public safety. She said that there was a gentleman screaming expletives at her on the sidewalk. And this is, this gentleman happens to be Councilor.
Councilor, you want to.
Council Harris's son, screaming expletives at our residents.
Councilor.
And causing the accident that she mentioned in her home, when her husband tried to get outside to stop him. Now, unfortunately, you can criticize all you like, but I will continue to speak for the people. Because I don't believe that anyone responded to her complaint. And that's not okay. That complaint was sent to, to all of us. We know that the mayor has been removed from public safety. We know that Council Jones Waters is now in charge of public safety. But when public safety is threatened, no one responds. And that's not okay.
Turn the, excuse me.
That is not okay.
Turn the camera off.
That is not okay. And I can read you.
Camera off. Pause the camera.
Don't turn that camera off.
Pause the camera.
Unless this meeting is adjourned, unless this meeting is adjourned, this is part of the public record. And it is not okay for you to attempt to hide that. That is not okay. You should not attempt to.
This is a public side. This is not from this side.
That talks about her tragedy that she experienced, the trauma that she experienced. And no one is.
It's not your business, Councilor.
You're right. It's not our business. It is all our business. It is the borough's business. It is the borough's business. Our resident was, was verbally assaulted by your son. Your adult son. And you are trying to.
A personal matter between you two citizens.
This is, it is not.
Why didn't you look at him? I was in touch with the streets.
No, this was.
Okay, Councilor.
My own business. And she's going to call that personal?
Councilor. That is their personal.
From last, I was firmly informed by her 52-year-old son. You're no problem.
They are two adults. And I have nothing to do with it. I was not present. I don't know anything about it. What I do know, Councilor, is that.
You got my email. You know everything about it.
I do know.
I received the email as well.
That last Thursday night, you screamed for vanity from that.
Chief Jamar Kell, I would kindly ask that you investigate this matter because it's not okay for our citizens to be harassed, not even by the local members or public officials. It's not okay. No one should have a fear of walking down the street.
You weren't talking to me.
Was I talking to your son?
You were talking to me as I chaired this meeting.
Excuse me. Excuse me. There's no, there's no hollering from the audience. Oh, there's no hollering from the audience. Please move on. Can we move on, please?
No, we cannot.
Yes, we can. Yes, we can, sir. There's no hollering from the audience.
This addresses the behavior of her son attacking residents.
There is no, there is no disruption from the audience. The meeting must continue. The meeting must continue.
And this is not the first time. This is not the first time that we have been harassed and traumatized by this individual.
I'm the first person of your son.
Okay, let's, let's call a recess. Let's recess.
She aren't ready to say.
Recession is good.
You aren't ready to say.
A recess for what?
For what reason?
We can, we don't need to stay there.
We were, we.
We ought to call for a recess. 15 minutes.
Go ahead. You recess.
Because there, because there is.
You recessed.
Uh, Councilor, Council.
No, you were, you were, you were. I weren't halfway. And then you, and then you're talking about recess.
Council Row Class, Council Row Class, there is a legal, a legal, there is, there is a need to, for him to share some legal information.
And I, and I understand it. I do understand it. However, we were scheduled to have an executive meeting at 6:00 PM this evening. Councilor Beatty and myself, the solicitor, the mayor, the borough manager, the finance director, we were all in attendance at 6:00 on a dot. We did not have that meeting that was scheduled. So that was a waste of our time. That's when we should have discussed whatever legal information that needed to be distributed amongst the council.
Did you have a forum? Was there a forum?
There doesn't need to be a forum. But here's the thing, but here's the thing. But here's the thing. You're, you scheduled that executive meeting and you were not in attendance. Then we were told that Councilor Jones Waters was going to side over that meeting. She wasn't even in attendance.
That's true. That's very true.
So that was a waste of our time. And I do not think it's fair. It's not fair that we had these people waiting for about 15 minutes to start our 7 o'clock meeting. And now we're asking for recess because everybody who was supposed to be there did not attend.
Citizens' forum is not even over yet.
No, no, no.
You're going to join the meeting and recess in the middle of Citizens' forum?
No, no, no. This is a mess. No.
I suggest you keep this meeting moving.
Yes, let's keep it. Yes, yes.
You've wasted enough of my time.
Yes. And I will say, with respect to Ms. Liz's concern, she sent an email to all councilors. Once we are informed of something happening to anyone, it's our responsibility to make sure she's directed in a, in a proper direction to get this issue resolved. That's our responsibility. If someone sends me an email and say I've been appalled it, I have a legal responsibility and obligation to make sure I reach out to my police chief or the mayor or whoever's in charge of the public safety and say, this is what I received. What can you do to help this resident? It's not a private matter once they bring it to our attention.
Or when it happens in the middle of Long Baker Boulevard, people walks away with your son.
Councilor, we've got a, we've got a recess in order for him to tell you.
He had an opportunity to tell us at 6:00.
He has a pending legal matter that you need to be informed of, Ms. Monroe need to be informed of, and Ms. Beatty needs to be informed.
We were here at 6:00.
It's legal. And, and today, when I came in here, I gave you the information. That's my private, personal information that I shared.
It wasn't private once you shared it.
And, and shared with you. And shared with you. Now, decency requires that, that you can say yes to that or no to that. But, but the legal, the legal matter that's in front of you now, I cannot disclose what the lawyer told me on the phone today. You need to be aware of a pending legal demand for you, for Councilor Monroe and Councilor Beatty. You need to know about.
Why didn't he tell us that at 6:00?
You, in order to give.
Mr. Boggs, were you not able to revi, rebuild that information?
First of all, I believe that the three of you are aware. But I was not going to give my, my report in an executive session without a forum. I wasn't going to do it.
So we need a forum for an executive session? We need a forum? Since when?
Then it's just, it's just a meeting.
We're not, that's what they.
My responsibility to tell.
There's no official, it's what we can have a workshop without a forum.
I don't like for my time to be wasted.
Well, you know, you know, emergencies and medical situations.
No, no, no. They had nothing to do with it.
Anyone. And what happens between two adults who want to curse each other out, that's their business.
In all of this time, all of this discussion, we could have missed all of this discussion and, and cut the meat and move it.
I don't like that.
Clara Johnson, you're here.
And so would you send a letter to each of the councilors? Just send them a letter as forms of a pending litigation against them?
We have pending litigation against us?
Yes.
The borough?
No, against you. No, against you.
Oh, I know what you're thinking.
Yes, we are.
Oh.
It's my responsibility to give the audience to have to tell them. That's my responsibility. Okay. And the audience should not know that. The detail. Uh, okay. Ms. Johnson, would you please?
Can you, you recessed the meeting. You should call it back to order.
We're not recessing now.
We never voted to recess. We're going ahead.
Good job. Moving forward. So we can pay the bills. We have to do that.
Good afternoon to all. Seems should have been a good afternoon. But nevertheless, last month councillor tabled Louise McDougall for the amount of $180. I see on the AP list this month that it's now $680. Can someone please tell me where that 500? And I'm gonna stand here and wait for an answer. Can someone tell me where that 500 extra dollars came from within a week? Cause it's on the AP list and it's our money. I want y'all to know it's our money I'm talking about.
Isn't this.
I'd like to know as well, so I have an answer.
This, isn't this the same invoice that was voted, was, um, voted to be taken off of the AP list last month?
It was voted to be tabled, councillor.
Well, now that you're talking.
Okay, so let me.
Now that you're talking, Sharon counsel, maybe you can answer the question where that $500 came in. I will. Will you answer?
Councillor Roque.
So, it was voted to be tabled. It was voted to be tabled. So what does table mean? We are just not going to discuss it at that time. We're going to discuss it later because we had no discussion. And here we are a month later with the same issue.
With more money.
With more money.
Councillor.
No, I'm just asking.
Okay, the question is, we cannot answer you, Ms. Clara. You didn't have anything to do with the lady's work here?
I'll accept that, but I'm gonna ask the councillors, please ask that to be taken off of the AP list because we don't know what our tax money is for. Thank you. Now, the next thing that I want, thank you councillor Harris. The next thing that I want to say is, where are the minutes? That's to the borough manager. Everything that goes up there for them should be on that table for us.
They're on, they're online. They're not on the internet.
I'm talking to, you can't answer the question, Sharon. You're gonna make me disrespect and I don't want to disrespect you. Honestly, I don't. I'm talking to you now and I would like you to answer, okay? I asked many, many, many times. Everything that goes on that floor for the councillors to vote on, we're supposed to have knowledge of that. We're supposed to have, we can have knowledge of that if you're just putting it on the table when we come out here like tonight. It was not on. It was, yeah, she gave me an evil. I had to give her one too. It was not on the, um, the web 24 hours ago as the sunshine act says it should be. It was not there. I even called the borough and I asked the second.
Is it?
No, it's not. No, it's not. Y'all sat there and you took my minutes and I'm not, thank you, sweetie. You know that they did. I'm not stopping.
You give them all the time in the world.
I'm not stopping.
Later finish a sentence.
Bring that fella along if you want to. Now you might as well start it all over again. Anyway, those things are supposed to be out here for us. They're supposed to be on the web 24 hours. So if we do, because as hard as the devil to look at an AP list with all of those pages when we come out here tonight. The other thing that I want to say there also, when, when we say that there is a sunshine act committed by you guys up there on the floor. That's supposed to go in the minutes as well. Tell them, Baz, am I right?
How do you?
You can't go. The borough manager is required to note in the meeting.
Excuse me, ma'am. There's no talking from the audience.
Sunshine.
There's someone at the podium.
We are allowed to say.
No, you do not have the right to speak up and disrupt the meeting.
We, we have not yet been found in violation of the sunshine act.
Yes.
We have several litigation pending in common.
I'm not talking about a litigation pending. I'm saying if I said that there was a sunshine act tonight that you guys could, I'm sorry, that they committed. That should be held in the minutes.
So I don't, so we don't, the, whatever comes out of comments.
You ain't gotta go. I'll send it to you. I got it. But I just can't get it now. I'll send it to you. Don't worry about it.
Okay.
So I believe if, if may you don't mind, I believe, I believe what Ms. Johnson is referring to. When citizens go to the podium and voice their concerns, the minutes are supposed to reflect.
It should reflect.
What their concerns are. You don't have to go into detail about it, but it should reflect what they're talking about.
Yes, yes. Please, Mr. Baz, tell her. Please, Mr. Baz, tell her.
Okay, it's an interpretation of making a record of the meeting. So I think it would be an interesting issue if it was appealed to a judge. What a judge would say if we simply said Ms. Johnson spoke at this time versus Ms. Johnson spoke and said one sentence versus Ms. Johnson spoke and we put it verbatim. I think it would be very interesting to see at which one of those points are we not making a record.
I didn't say verbatim. I said, Jeff, I didn't say verbatim.
No, I, I give you a spectrum. I believe that if we just say that Ms. Johnson spoke tonight, we created a record. I don't believe we have to say the specific content. I think, I think, in your, I think it's best.
No, it's not best. No, it's not best. And I'm gonna tell you why it's not best.
It should include everything. I agree with you. I agree with you, but the law says that we only have to make a record.
It's best so it doesn't show for.
No, I'm not gonna accept your answer, Mr. Baz. And, and no, I didn't go to law school, but I got common sense. Um, the fact of the matter is you can say I spoke, but three months down the line, who's gonna know what I spoke about?
I agree.
So then put what I say, then put what I say.
But there is no legal requirement.
Then put what I say, Mr. Baz.
No legal requirement.
There's no legal requirement to do the last.
The lawyer didn't answer to the point.
It should be held as a record in the minutes.
Never been done in the history of this borough.
The other thing that I have to say is that when Sharon counsel gets up on the floor and she goes on her platform for 30 minutes. And she talks about this thing, that thing, and that thing that's not on the agenda, you open it up for us, the citizens. You're not letting me finish, so you don't know what I'm saying. So. You open it up so that we can comment on anything that you say. Last thing I'm gonna say, tonight is voting legisla, vote Sharon out.
So I have a question for Mr. Baz. Mr. Baz, I am looking at the Pennsylvania sunshine act open meetings law right now. And it does say here, must agencies keep minutes of their public meetings? Yes. Agencies are required to record the time, date, and place of their meetings, the names of the members present, the substance of all official action taken during the meetings. And a record of how each individual voted. The minutes must also include the names of all citizens who appeared officially and the subject of their testimony.
Thank you. I didn't go to the bathroom, but I knew that.
That's what it said. I mean, we don't have to have a further discussion. It is what it is.
For government, for government buildings and government meetings, I don't know if they do that in the Congress. I don't know if they do it in the state legislature. We certainly, we certainly have not had a history of it.
That's cause you didn't have a.
Just because we didn't have.
That's not, that's not true.
It's not supposed to be.
When Ms. Presswood was our borough manager, she wrote an entire book report every time we had a meeting. We could barely get through it.
We'd like to know what happened to the $3 million surplus when you were president. Like to know what happened.
Check your, check your backyard.
Did she make a record of that?
Check your backyard.
Check, check your backyard, councillor. Cause you were president. I was not here.
Point of origin. Check your backyard.
Point of origin. Next on the agenda.
I was supposed to speak?
Uh, not done citizens' forum. Uh, we are finished with citizens'.
No, you're not. You're not.
Okay, come on. I think you're on the.
Depression in action.
Okay.
If I just speak like this, can everybody hear me?
I don't.
No? Is that better?
Let's project.
Uh, the last 15 months have unfortunately subjected the residents of this borough to a leadership where fiscal mismanagement appears to be the norm. The residents and various members of council continuously ask about the AP expenditures and despite valid concerns and objections, the expenses are all still paid. Looking at the AP list, we see expenses are out of control. The engineering firm is charging over $20,000 this month. Legal expenses are also too high. The other engineering firms could also be more affordably and adequately provide services to this borough. Another expense from the Valory Group was also submitted despite Mr. Alori's confirmation that he was not to be paid for expenses. Council is now looking for a new webmaster. No advertising or requests for proposals were put through. All we have is the borough manager saying firms were referred. Refferred by whom? What are the qualifications specified? The residents are sick of council overspending and not being fiscally responsible. We need to start being fiscally responsible. Public safety should also be a priority, yet is it continually being overlooked? The Valory Group clearly indicated that this borough should have 28 full-time officers. While the civil service commission has finally been reconvened, when can we hire full-time officers? Residents are tired of being told people are not obtaining justice or no one is available to speak with because of the shortage of full-time officers. This is a disservice to the police and it's also a disservice to the residents of this community. I am tired of the residents' calls to council to do the right thing and being ignored. We need to begin making changes. We need to begin prioritizing what expenses should be occurring. How do we spend our limited resources of this borough? This borough deserves better than what we are getting. I am also appalled at the fact that the right to know requests are being ignored. The right to know requests that are won or forced into appeal and we're having solicitor pay a solicitor to fight against something that we were told we're allowed to have. And when we do that, we're also having the solicitor misinterpret what is being asked for. That is wrong. If the borough leadership believes in transparency, then release the records. Even our police chief, through no fault of his own, is now mirrored in a controversy. Why are the names of the eight residents that selected the final three police chief candidates being withheld? We are paying good money, as I said before, for the solicitor to help hide the names of the residents. If nothing was done wrong, we need to have those names. This calls into question the motives of council. The residents deserve and are demanding transparency. Please begin fulfilling your fiscal responsibility of this borough and act in a manner becoming of true leaders. We want transparency. We want fiscal responsibility and we want respect for every member and resident of this borough. And the other thing that I'm going to mention, because it was mentioned at this meeting, we're always telling residents that we shouldn't be calling out or verbally abusing people. Yet, when some residents do this, police get called and they are called to terms. When other residents do that, depending upon who they're related to, nothing happens. That is wrong. And one of the residents that does this that gets called usually appears here. And so we all know who I'm talking about. So why was it appropriate for one of this, one of our residents to be assaulted and no apologies or anything from members of council? That's not right. I'm sorry. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me.
Hey, Mayor, would you like to. Change your comment?
All right.
Can you shuffle the agenda?
Mayor held mayor's forum on Thursday, March 2nd in the Borough Hall. New police chief Henry Giammarco was again introduced to residents. He provided, he was provided an opportunity to expound on his vision for the agent police department. He did express the fact that many good things were done prior to his arrival that he would like to build upon. This includes, but is not limited to, community policing. He also expressed his goal of introducing a citizens' crime app that he's developing for use with our residents. Uh, as usual, we gave away any free gift certificates, refreshments for all those who were in attendance. The next mayor's forum will be held on Thursday, June 1st at 7:00 P.M. Uh, the flag is being flown at half staff for the remainder of this month and actually the remainder of this week in honor of Chief Giammarco's son-in-law's tragic passing. Shane McHugh is a police officer in the Philadelphia Police Department, a battalion chief for the fire department, first responder. And our thoughts and prayers go out to Chief Giammarco and his family during this difficult time. You have our full support. Um, police staffing with several retirements and transfers to other police departments. The agent police department currently, by my count, I know it's gone back and forth, has full-time, 14 full-time officers with two out, I believe, still in long-term disability. We're currently down to 12 officers, which is almost half what we are allotted at 21, notwithstanding somebody mentioned the Valari report that has, that we should have higher than that. The civil service commission members all attended the mayor's forum and were introduced to the residents. The commission is in the process of ramping up the hiring of full-time officers so that we can address our vacancies as soon as possible, which is a positive and welcome development. Current members of the commission are Owen Wooton, Carl Graham, and Michael Trent, who's in attendance tonight. Memorandum of understanding with Upper Darby Police Department and the agent police department is still in effect. And that will, I won't read the rest of it. You could read that, but it will be in, in effect for the foreseeable future. Until many things occur where we feel that it is completely safe to, to hold prisoners again, which includes being up to full staffing so that we're not handicapped in any way. And also sitting down with the chief and making sure that everything's in order. One of the things that we're discussing is there's a lot of antiquated procedures and things downstairs that we, we have to take a look at. Even the layout of how the cells are, which I have been talking to Chief Giammarco about. Is there anything you would like to add or comment?
Now, just from my family, I want to express gratitude and thanks for the calls and everything and, um, thank you for everything. Thanks for your prayers. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. And here ends my report. Are there any questions?
Yeah, ma'am. I do have a question. Um, it's been mentioned several times that we, that some, the residents are not aware of who was on the selection committee to choose our new chief of police. I wasn't aware of who's on, who was on the selection committee. Just wondering if you were aware.
I have no clue. I was not involved in that. I am not aware and I was not a part of the official part of the process.
Uh, ma'am, I have a question as well. Um, I believe as of March 2023, we filled the last vacancies of the civil service commission, if I'm correct. So where are we to date with respect to testing, hiring? I mean, we got a first test, so forth and so on. I mean, where are we? I mean, we're going into April now.
Yeah, the, the last member chosen was Michael Trent, who's in the audience today. And I, he and the other two members attended the mayor's forum earlier this month. I met with them impromptu and let them know that if they have any questions or if I could be of assistance to ramp up the commission, I'm, I'm available. As you know, I was chairman of the civil service commission for seven years. So I'm well-versed in what to do. I've not heard anything. And my hope is that they will meet soon and start to get, and the other thing that needs to happen, we, they need a formal request from borough council for police officers. So they, they need to be empowered to first hire by, by council.
Well, then I believe this is the time to make a motion to amend the agenda to, um, to ask for consideration to, for the civil service commission to hire full-time police officers.
And how many? And how many are we looking at?
They don't, the Civil Service Commission cannot hire.
To open a test.
To open a test, okay. Open a test.
To authorize the test.
To meet and authorize the test.
And how, we would need to know about how many, but we would also need to know what's in the budget.
It could be approximate. The reason is that they have to go through, once the authorization is given, are they looking for one, are they looking for two, are they looking for five? It could be approximate, it doesn't have to be.
So can we just?
But it will help the process.
Can we just open a test and create a list, and then we'll be able to pull from that list?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'd like to amend Counselor Roelklaub's motion to ask that the Civil Service Commission meet to authorize a test and develop a list that we can pull from to hire full-time police officers.
I second.
And you should also, council has to authorize the proper borough official to advertise as well, because it has to be publicly advertised.
Before, before, before the motion.
It was moved.
It was moved.
Excuse me. There are questions, there are going to be comments, and then I'm going to ask for a motion to, I'm going to ask for a motion to table, because there's more aspects to opening up the Civil Service Commission.
So let's vote on the motion to table.
Excuse me, counselor, counselor. Counselor.
This is, this is a council who's not present, who has a question. She has the right to both be heard and to speak.
We can't hear her.
So, excuse me, if you don't indulge, okay, I'll put it right here. If you don't indulge, you're going to ask the question?
Hold on a second, Mr. Johnson. Hold on a second, Mr. Johnson. Chuck Counselor, Chuck Counselor Johnson will hold it now. First of all, there has to be a clarification with regards to this recommendation that 28 officers would be, are recommended through the Valori Group report. I'm not certain of that. I don't know if that was a.
A point of order.
Excuse me.
Point of order.
The motion is not about how many officers. The motion is to open up the testing of officers. It's not about how many to hire.
It's a list.
Excuse me, counselor. When you talk about opening up, and I'm not opposed to opening up, we have voted to complete the membership of the Civil Service Commission. They are in place. There are several factors involved in deciding how many police officers you're going to hire, that you're going to recommend to hire. There are factors with regards to the budget. There are factors with regards to what our new chief made recommendations at the mayor's forum, that you have to, in terms of looking for officers, what type of package are you going to offer? What type, excuse me.
I'm asking for a point of order. I'm asking for a point of order.
This is irrelevant.
Excuse me. I'm asking for a point of order that has nothing to do with the motion.
I am speaking, and I'm going to finish what I have to say. It is a multifaceted task that the mayor is fully aware of, that the chief is fully aware of, that you are not fully aware of.
Well, then you should, you should make sure you're fully aware.
And that is what I'm, and that is what I'm attempting to do now. The chief recommended at the, at the mayor's forum that certain things we could do to attract officers to this borough. He talked about hiring, bringing them on to the police academy, that we could pay for them, at the tune of $6,000 each person, that they would be committed to serving us a year or two years, that we would, that we would have a signing bonus. There are several aspects to attracting, as the mayor had indicated in his forum, that there's, there's, there's a lot of people that, there's, you know, there's such a large number of people that we need, and people all over the state are looking for, excuse me, stop talking, please.
This is just a stall tactic. There's a motion on the floor, and I'm asking for a point of order.
I'm the chair, I control the motion.
I'm asking for a point of order.
Excuse me, I'm the chair.
I'm asking for a point of order.
I'm asking for a point of order as well.
Solicitor Bob.
Counselor, counselor. I'm not finished.
What do you mean? She's not there, Nick, so.
Counselor.
We're violating private rules.
Counselor.
This is what, I don't care if we never went by the private rules, we going by, we're doing it today. Now, we're doing it today. Solicitor Bob. Solicitor Bob. We're doing it today. We have a motion on the floor. She's disgusting, she has nothing to do with the motion on the floor.
Talking to the. Counselor.
No, we have a motion on the floor, see? This is nonsense.
We need to vote.
This is the nonsense. We need to vote on the motion that's on the floor.
Because if you vote.
We are paying. She don't want to hire police for you.
Why didn't you discuss this in the workshop meeting?
That's it. We asked for, after we paid all this money, to do this study, and he's the one who recommended the 28 police officers. You don't want to hire. That's all we're asking for, for the test to be opened and we develop the list. That's all we're asking for.
Madam President, I think I can clear this up.
No, we're clear on what we're asking for.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay, points well taken of other studies and things to attract police officers, but can we first, whether it's 21, 28, whatever, as was suggested, create a list, authorize the Civil Service Commission to start the hiring process, create a list, and then, as we go along, we could discuss those criteria?
That's the motion. That's the motion.
And that will satisfy all.
We said that on the motion. That is the motion that's on the floor.
Counselor, Counselor Johnson has a.
We can't hear him. She said there's so much going on, she's not sure, so she shouldn't take part in this vote.
When there's a council not present, according to Robert's Rules of Order, you can have conversations. She has to be able to hear, and she has to be able to answer.
Then she can't be on a.
I will ask you, I will simply ask you to indulge Counselor Vice President Johnson in asking her questions. Ma'am, what is your question?
The motion that Counselor Roelklaub is requesting, is it to authorize Civil Service to start the process? I'm not sure, it's so much going on. I'm not clear on what she's asking.
Yes, the motion on the floor is to.
To authorize the opening of the Civil Service Testing and to establish a list of police candidates.
Yes.
That's the motion, ma'am, that's on the floor.
And you're not locked, we could discuss other criteria to attract the officers as we go along, but at least it'll start the process.
The budgetary requirements are just as valid.
We can even vote.
Are just as valid.
We just lost three officers. Who's been in the budget for those three officers? Two officers retired, Officer Kowalski transferred to Exeter.
Excuse me, ma'am, Mr. Nichols has experience, he's asking for clarification. Please, sir.
The Civil Service List, when established, is active for one year. Once that list is established, council can say, after you have your qualified officers, correct, for all chief, you can say, because it takes about three months.
And it'll take us longer.
Right. You can say, if three months from now you want to hire one, you want to wait later down the road to hire two, or at this point, as long as, you can do it at any point before that list expires. So we can work out the mechanics of everything, the civil service processes for the Civil Service Commission, to bring you qualified candidates, so that this council and the chief can decide who they want to hire, and when, and what that criteria is.
And not to neglect the hiring of part-time officers that do not go through the Civil Service Commission.
So do that.
To save, to save.
But that's not the motion on the floor.
Excuse me, excuse me.
You're arguing the motion.
There is a motion on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor, and you're arguing the motion.
If I continue to talk, the motion will fail.
What?
So, so, if I continue to talk, if I continue to talk, the motion will fail.
No.
I ain't like, Counselor, is that what you're trying to do? Counselor, Counselor, yeah. I'm not saying, I'm not saying that the motion is to fail. I'm simply saying to you, the mayor has explained it, the finance director has explained it, I'm simply giving the audience, and everybody else that's listening, that you have an $8 million budget.
Oh, stop that. You're doing with the motion on the floor. This course is the meeting. And Lucy. There's a motion on the floor. Are there any, are there any questions on the motion, or, because this isn't.
Ladies, there's a motion on the floor. Please make the motion, please, someone.
The motion on the floor.
Excuse me, Counselor, Vice President Johnson has another question.
There are questions.
Counselor Johnson has another question.
Any further questions?
Yes, Counselor Johnson has another question.
More questions before we call for the vote.
Please.
Any further questions?
We can't hear. Please.
I'd like to ask the mayor a question.
Please. Go ahead.
Mayor Hethkins, can you tell me how many candidates do we have? Zero.
That's easy, zero, because it's not.
That's why there's a motion, ma'am, to open it up for them.
That's why we need this.
Yes, he did, he said.
Yeah, zero, because we're not, we're not in the process. We're not advertised, we have zero candidates.
This is why we shouldn't have Zoom.
It's not the mayor.
It's not my motion, the motion is on the floor.
You made some comments about the Civil Service Commission, I'm hearing comments about sitting down, getting some criteria prior to.
The criteria is the test.
Yeah. All I was saying with that, Counselor, is in the process of ramping up, and what the Civil Service Commission does, what are the various steps, I was willing to help the Civil Service Commission in that process. However, it doesn't preclude us from starting, and, and what has to start first is an authorization with a vote from council to start the process so that they could get.
I've got it.
Yeah, that's all. And it's simple, it doesn't preclude what the council president is saying, that we could discuss how we attract them, what is in the budget, as we go along, but as we know, we're woefully understaffed, and we can't wait any longer. We just need to vote on that motion, okay, to start.
Any other questions? Any other observations?
This process will take three to four months. We need to hire police officers.
There's a motion, there's a motion on the floor, ladies and.
Mr. Johnson, what's the specific motion?
Oh, my gosh.
Specific motion is to authorize.
Because I want to make sure that this, that this happens right. Does it have advertising in it?
Yes.
No, it doesn't.
No.
Right. Excuse me, please, let me, please, let me read the motion, then let the solicitor tell me what I need to put in the motion, then we can vote on the motion. So the motion states, to authorize the opening of the Civil Service, of the Civil Service Commission for testing, and to establish the list of police candidates. Now, Mr. Bob, what else?
Yes, so I think, I think to get to what you, what you want to do, I think that's the cart before the horse. I think we have to advertise so that the Civil Service Commission gets the resumes. That's the first thing that we do, and then we can parse them out and give them the test. And we do not have to pay any money, other than the advertising fee. We don't have to say that we're having eight officers, two officers, one officer, zero officers. We can just advertise that Yaden is looking for a full-time police officer. So I think that should be the motion.
So wait, I'm sorry, I just feel like this is another stall tactic for our legal representative to appease our council president. I think that it should all be in one motion, so that we advertise, as well as allow, your wordplay here is off, and it's, and stop with the legal jargon going over our, going over our residents, that is not.
You're not the expert.
So what I'm, so, but I also put the motion on the floor, and I put, I put the motion on the floor. So I would like to amend my motion. You haven't listened to him in 15 months, ma'am. So I, why should we start now? My amended motion is to, my amended motion, my amended motion, my amended.
She's in the middle of an amended motion. Why we got to go through this?
Is to advertise the position of full-time police officer, and allow the Civil Service Commission to hold, and, hold a test to establish a list from the, from the resumes that they receive, all in one motion. Second.
That's the, that's the inherent job of the Civil Service Commission. Once they get the advertised resumes.
Their job hasn't been done in years, so let's just put it all in one motion, so we can be clear.
I was concerned about was the word advertising, because if the word advertising is not in there, it doesn't mean anything.
It's my motion, I put it on the floor.
Hold on, hold on.
We are entitled to take a vote on it.
Hold on, hold on.
If the people don't like it, they can vote, no.
Look, the amended motion doesn't hurt, it's everything, I'm not taking sides, it makes sense. Let's vote on that motion.
It's been moved and seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. So that's what we wait for.
Was amended to include advertising.
I did.
She did.
I just said it.
She just did.
I just amended it.
She just did.
Yes.
Yeah, she just did, that's perfect. Let's just vote on it. We don't disagree with your argument.
Madam, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Johnson, please repeat the motion, so we're absolutely clear on what we're doing here.
And Mr. Bob, if I'm not exact, please help me on this.
Oh, geez, why are we doing this? Why are we doing this?
No, we are not, this isn't about the budget. This isn't about hiring, this isn't about spending one cent.
The amended motion, how Councilwoman Monroe explained it, is the appropriate way to do it.
Excuse me, we're going to hear the solicitors, the finance director speaking.
The amended motion, as Counselor Monroe presented, is the appropriate way to do it.
Correct.
Thank you. All right, can we take the vote, please?
Take the vote, please.
Excuse me, the motion, please, if you can, if you're correcting, the motion reads, as amended, advertise the position for full-time police officers, to properly advertise the position for full-time police officers, to authorize the opening of the Civil Service Testing, and to establish the list of police candidates. Is that close?
I think that's a, I think that's a good motion.
For council approval.
Please, one person at a time. What is this, uh?
I think that's a good motion.
Thank you, sir.
Very good.
Okay, can we vote? All in favor, to indicate.
I think we got to do a roll call.
I'm asking for a roll call.
Roll call, please.
Let me begin the roll call. Madam, Madam President.
Yes.
Wait a minute, just give me one second.
Okay. Okay, it's going to be your turn soon.
Okay.
Okay, hold on one second, please. Can somebody, who made the motion, please? Thank you. And who seconded? Thank you. So, Madam President, what is your pleasure?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Counselor Waters.
Yes.
Counselor Roelklaub.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Monroe.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor B.
Yes.
Thank you. It's unanimous. The motion passed.
You didn't just ask the judge.
Progress.
So I'd like to ask for another motion, to advertise for the hiring of part-time police officers, something that we said that we would do and does not require the Civil Service Commission, and we've been saying that we're going to do it for months, I still haven't seen the advertisement, so.
So moved.
I just moved it.
We approved that.
Second.
You already approved that, we just need the advertising. If you can provide you with enough time, then you can advertise.
All right, so you don't have to vote. It was our first issue.
More progress.
Madam President?
Yes.
She said yes.
Consideration for the accounts payable list for March.
So moved.
I asked Madam President to please by name say the motion, second the motion, and then when you vote, to say your name out loud, please. Who's made the motion, please, for the AP list?
I made the motion.
I made the.
You made the motion.
Thank you. Can someone, who made, is it, Counselor Waters, you made the motion? Thank you.
And we need to make sure that we are using our, our devices responsibly. We're not streaming music, videos, casino games, or whatever, but it's, it's not okay. So, Mr. Nichols, I need you to update that inventory, to reflect that I have nothing, and to reflect that people who, who have been long gone from this borough, including Matt Black, the former fire chief, fire inspector, fire marshal, fire marshal, who's been gone for more than five years, he's reflected as having a phone. And that's, that's not okay. We, we, this is a business. This is, this isn't our, our personal, we shouldn't be, and we shouldn't be using it for personal things.
I have questions as well.
And Counselor Monroe, this was actually updated as of today, but it wasn't like, you know, Matt Black had a phone, whatever he is now, it was just that whoever has Matt Black's phone, the name wasn't changed. But I want to put that perception out there that there were like cell phones, slowly, that that's not the case, that the name wasn't updated, that as of today, those names were updated by our Verizon.
Thank you. Very well, I have some questions as well. Okay, so, this, on the AP list, with respect to the Louise McDougall invoices, I'm looking at the invoices, and I'm very concerned. So we have on these invoices, first of all, I, I, I don't know who gets paid $50 an hour to decorate, I don't know, but January 27th, and she lists the things that she has done. January 29th, the same list. January 30th, the same, same thing. January 31st, same thing. I'm not understanding this. So, according to these invoices, it looks like she was in this borough from January 27th, all the way through January 31st. And some of the things that's listed as things that she performed, I know for a fact that other counselors did the same thing. So I do not understand how duplicate efforts took place, but yet and still, she's gonna get paid for it, and it was already done. Some of the supplies that is mentioned here was already purchased, according to the receipts I received. And I will say, Counselor Johnson, Lauren Johnson did a very good job with her receipts. She itemized everything, and I appreciated that, and that's how a receipt is supposed to be presented. But other counselors, Counselor Jones Waters, she issued receipts unitemized, and you have no idea what the money was being spent on. In addition, there were some things on there that was for personal use, like a, a bottle of lemonade, for 100, I mean, for $1.25. Did you share that at your multicultural event with everyone?
I sure did.
I'm speaking. You understand what I'm saying? A dollar, a dollar, listen, I'm going over the receipts, people. I'm going over the receipts. So if you, so if you, okay, I'm not talking to the audience, I'm talking to the cloud. If someone spends $1.25 of taxpayers' money.
Our money.
That is a problem.
Yes, it is.
Every penny is supposed to be accounted for. These invoices from Louise McDougall does not make sense to me. It makes absolutely no sense. It reminds me of the invoices that were submitted by Joel Avery. Duplicate invoices, just different dates.
Different money.
And there's no reason for this, no reason. And to be quite honest, and I'm not taking away from the police chief's swearing-in ceremony, but I did take a peek at the reception. There's no way in the world.
No way in the world.
Someone should be getting $680.
No.
Okay? No way.
No way.
Now, my next question here.
Counselor, before you move on, before you move on, I'm gonna give you some clarification with Ms. Toni McDougall.
Here we go.
Mr. Dodson, myself, and Ms. Johnson met, and hired, Mr. Dodson hired Ms. McDougall to arrange.
You hired Ms. McDougall?
He, Mr. Dodson doesn't seem to agree that he hired.
Excuse me, I'm talking. You wanted clarification, you say you don't understand it, so let's set the record straight. Set it straight, please.
That'll be a first.
Mr. Dodson was introduced to her to do this work for the reception for the chief, because she had volunteered to work for the cultural event a few weeks before, and did an exceptional job. Counselor Johnson was in the meeting with myself and Mr. Dodson. She agreed to buy and produce and provide string beans and meatballs. Then she wanted to bring chicken and all of that, and we said no. Let this lady decorate, who has a 20-year history and experience catering and decorating and all of that. The lady not only came the day before the event to do the layout, organize the layout, Ms. Johnson came and volunteered her labor to do some of the same things. Tables were situated a certain way, and they were changed by Ms. McDougall. She also bought linen tablecloths opposed to plastic for this type of event. She bought centerpieces. She did a number of things, and she not only did that, she recommended to Mr., excuse me, to Mr. Dodson, that you should have storage bins for this material that you buy, if you have an overage, that you can store it at the borough, you don't have to keep buying the same things over and over again, or submitting invoices for that. So one of her invoices, and I can attest to it, one of her invoices was to pay for a portable storage bin on rollers. She bought two of them. Those 80, that $80 invoice reflects those two bins that she purchased that are on the second floor, right now, with storage of napkins and cups and things for any future event. So that's a clarification there. She does.
Who washes these linens?
As a professional caterer, et cetera, that designs and executes.
So why don't we have a contract with her?
So.
That outlines what she's gonna do with us. Why do we have this copy paste receipt?
Okay, you can, you can look at her receipts any way you please, Counselor. I'm simply giving the clarification. She did that, she, she spent, excuse me, she spent her money, her money out of her own pocket, she's been asked to wait over a month to get reimbursed, she asked for a deposit in advance, she never got that. And so the $50, the $50 per hour, the number of hours she worked, including what she spent out of her pocket.
Did she say 50 hours?
50 hours?
And taking her time, and shopping for that, that equipment, she did on her own time, and she did not charge us for that.
Why are we running this like a backyard barbecue? This is not okay.
Why wasn't she hired with the vote of council?
No.
You don't have to have a vote.
Because she's a, because she's a friend of a friend of a friend, and that's not okay.
The lady to do the work.
Then you pay her back.
She spent her money.
Go dig it up.
That money in your backyard, and you pay her back. Her invoice here tonight.
And I appreciate that clarification.
Excuse me, Counselor Monroe, I mean Counselor, Madam, Counselor Johnson, Counselor Roclough still has questions on the floor.
Yes, I do appreciate that account. I mean, and with no disrespect, the clarification makes absolutely no sense to me. Bottom line is, if you're saying someone spent money, their own money, then there should be receipts in front of me, attached to this. I don't see any receipts. I, I, I can't take your word for it, nobody else's word. I have to look at the receipts. That is my responsibility, due diligence, to make sure everything is being done properly. There's no receipts attached to this. And again, the tables, the chairs, if I'm not mistaken, they're set up by Public Works. They're set up by Public Works. I see assistant cleanup, assistant cleanup. There should have been monitors. We usually have call monitors that come with the, the event, when they're being booked with the borough. This one I'm seeing here, i- is just nothing. Food, beverage, appetizer setup throughout space, five hours.
And that is correct.
Room dress, room dress and decorate, room dress and decorate with items presented for use by borough. Set up and decor, welcome table, oversee food, gas, door program. I mean, she did the same thing for three days, so you mean to tell me, by the time the event took place, the food was already out on the table? Because she sat right here, January 27th.
Counselor.
Food, beverage, appetizer setup. She set it up on the 27th, and it's been sitting on the table all the way until January 31st.
Counselor, that's, Counselor, that's not the case.
And this is what the invoices say.
How, how did the amount of the invoice increase?
I'm moving on to the next one.
So I just, before we do move on for that, I think that what our resident presented is how we voted down this at our last meeting, and now it's $500 more.
And that's what I have.
So how is it that the, is this you?
That is not true.
That is all it is.
So there was a check for $189 that was canceled out. Then it was another check that we, that was, and which was re-submitted, that was on that same AP list, was $600. If you look on the AP list that you have in front of you, the very first page has $600 being canceled and voided out. The $189 that the Council President referenced was a deposit, but the total amount was $600. When Council voted at the last meeting, you guys voted to table it, so we canceled that one out, because my, my recollection is that Counselor Johnson was supposed to negotiate something. So that we can get a different invoice. So again, she rendered services, we just, you all just said that you didn't want to pay the $600, you want Counselor Johnson to do whatever she was gonna do to come back with an updated invoice.
Now she came back with $680 invoice. And again, this invoice is not accurate, because if you're telling me you set up food on January 27th, then you did it again on January 31st. You set up food on the 27th, and then again on the 20th. We only have one event, once we're in. So these invoices are not correct. These invoices are missed. They're not correct. And we should not consider this, because right now, these invoices seem to be a little wrong.
You know, the lady is not here to speak for herself.
So I make a motion to.
I need the invoice.
I make a motion to amend the motion and to remove this item from our AP list.
And some further clarification.
There was a, there was another motion on the floor.
I was there on the 29th and on the 30th. I can't hear her.
I can't hear her.
Um, Ms. McDougall was there, she did some table settings as well, she did the dessert spread, she set up a mobile bar. I had asked Ms. McDougall to please submit an itemized list of what she was requesting. Now, I have not to date seen those, that list. Ms. McDougall, I, I know her, I did not know at the time that she was the person doing this. She's very nice with it. She's been waiting almost two months for some sort of payment. At this point, I would like to again ask Ms. McDougall to furnish Council with an itemized list of what she actually spent. And also, I'm asking that since she has not been paid all this time, I know she was there, I know she didn't buy things, she didn't bring them in, that we at least give her a $300 or $400 deposit, and we speak about this executive session, about the rest of the money.
So my motion was already on the floor to remove it.
She did find it, but I, just like you always like to see in our list, but I, but because she was there and working, it's been so long, I would like to be fair enough with her, that we give her about $400 or $500.
No, no.
Don't work like that. She needs to submit the receipts to reflect what she's asking.
So I have my motion to amend, sorry, my motion to amend was, was seconded.
Lauren? Counselor Johnson, she can put a motion on the floor.
My, my motion on the floor is to.
This new conversation taking place by Counselor Johnson.
My motion was on the floor before that conversation started.
I don't want Ms. McDougall was made aware that she needed to submit receipts instead of that she.
Well, who hired her?
To be itemized.
Who hired her? Whoever hired her should have made her aware.
Because she was there, she did work, she did buy.
She had a contract.
She had a contract?
She's been making an offer. The hiring officer is clearly a common.
So there's no contract?
There's a motion on the floor to amend, to amend, what? There's a motion on the floor to amend the original motion, which is to pass the AP list. The motion is to remove Ms. McDougall from the AP list at this time.
And it was seconded.
It was seconded.
And no law history, just vote, Sharon. Ask for the vote, no history.
The motion has been made, the motion has been seconded, please.
Okay, take your roll call vote, please.
This is to amend the motion to remove Ms. McDougall from the AP list.
Do you know what the motion is?
Yeah, got you.
No, it will not. Council has decided that it is not an amendment to give her something in lieu of her receiving the $680 or $83. This is to remove, the amendment is to remove that line item from the AP list until Council meets again to discuss it. That's what the amendment is.
I didn't say all of that.
So she turns in that itemized list, is what I'm being told.
I'll make a motion for Ms. McDougall to be paid at least $400.
That's not, there's a motion already on the floor.
You can put another motion on the floor while motion is there. No, another motion is there.
No, 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 no. What I'm saying is, see, you have, I'm not allowed, I'm not allowed to interpret what's being said, so I, I will, I will, yes, ma'am. What I, what I, what I will do is let, ask pro temp Talia Jones Waters to make her last statement, so you can hear it.
The first, the first motion is, is to remove completely.
Right.
If that passes, or if it doesn't, the 600 stays. If it passes, if someone wants to make a motion to put something on there, that would be something separate. But right now, what's before Council is to completely remove Ms. McDougall from the list.
Right. So I will ask for the vote, please.
Without pay, that's the current motion, yes.
He pretty much said what you, what we all have been saying, there's a motion on the floor to amend it, to remove Ms. McDougall from the AP list. He also said, that, once that's done, someone can make a motion to amend the last motion to give her $300 or $400, whatever Council decides to do. Okay? So Counselor Harris, I mean, President Harris, please.
No.
Counselor Lauren Johnson, please. Counselor Waters, please.
No.
Counselor Roclough?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Brooks?
I'll make a motion for Mrs. McDougal to be paid at least $400.
That's not what, there's a motion already on the floor.
You can put another motion on the floor while motion is there.
No, another motion is there.
No, 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 no. What I'm saying is, see you have, I'm not allowed, I'm not allowed to interpret what's being said, so I will, I will, yes ma'am. What I, what I, what I will do is let, ask pro temp Talia Jones Waters to make her last statement so you can hear it.
The first, the first motion is, is to remove completely.
Right.
If that passes, or if it doesn't, the $600 stays. If it passes, if someone wants to make a motion to put something on there, that would be something separate. But right now, what's before counsel is to completely remove Mrs. McDougal from the list.
So I will ask for them to vote, please.
Without pay, that's the current motion, yes.
He pretty much said what you, what we all have been saying, there's a motion on the floor to amend it, to remove Mrs. McDougal from the AP list. He also said that once that's done, someone can make a motion to amend the last motion to give her $300 or $400, whatever counsel decides to do. Okay, so Counsel Harris, I mean, President Harris, please. Counselor Loren Johnson, please. Counselor Waters, please.
No.
Counselor Roeklau?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Brooks?
Sustained.
What? Sustained?
She says, she says sustained.
Counselor Monroe?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes, yes.
Counselor Beatty?
Yes.
Is four to two with one abstention. She will be removed from the AP list. Is there another motion?
Wait, it was removed from the AP list? What are you doing?
She wants to make another motion.
Is there another motion, please?
So that was a.
That we give Mrs. McDougal a deposit on the work that she did approximately say $400.
No, no, that's not a, no.
You can't do that.
That's not a deposit.
Unfortunately, unfortunately.
I'll second that motion.
No, no.
He said, he said it can be done.
You can't.
Yeah, he said it can be done. So, so I'll.
So it's not a deposit, the work.
It's not a deposit, the woman has done the work.
Yes, yes.
We're arguing over the word deposit.
And this is a pass. You can say partial payment.
So I'll, I'll be.
So this is why there's discord.
She already amended the motion.
The, the motion was already amended, it was removed.
And if she's a businesswoman, she's supposed to add a bar.
But she has.
That's right.
Ask Loren, does she want to amend the motion?
She has to amend her motion and take the deposit out.
To say, take the deposit.
Yeah, take that out.
I'm sorry?
You take the word deposit.
You just want to give her, the motion going to change to just give her money.
The motion is to pay the woman for working, you put yourself in her possession.
By hiring people.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, if you can just let us move the meeting along.
With more corruption, I think so.
So I make the motion.
Ma'am, please.
So I make the motion to, well, to amend the other motion that Loren Johnson mentioned to take out the deposit and give Mrs. McD, Mrs. McDougal, um, $400 for her service, for her services rendered.
Excuse me, excuse me, I'm hearing these messages. Counselor Johnson, Vice President, I'm listening to an amended motion, and with you talking in the background, I can't write fast.
Oh, well, whatever, whatever she wants to do.
So, so, so that's okay. That's all right, Ms., Counselor Waters has, says it's okay for you to make the motion, please. You're welcome.
Motion to give a partial payment to the lady McDougal of $500.
Five, changed it.
No.
I second, I second.
Moved it properly second.
So I have a statement, actually, not even a question. So I can appreciate what Ms., Counselor Loren Johnson is trying to do, however, with these current invoices that she submitted, they're inaccurate. They do not reflect the true work that she alleges she performed. Again, on January 27th. No, wait a minute, on January 27th, Mrs. McDougal indicated, on this invoice, on January 27th, food, beverage, appetizers set up throughout space.
That's a duplicate invoice, Counselor.
But that's part of the $680 that she submitted.
But it's a duplicate.
And now, well, no, 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 no. So, and then.
It's obvious she was only there one day, she came the day.
Well, then the invoice needs to be reflected.
Yeah.
It needs to be reflected. You cannot, we're not running, uh, uh, we're not. We're not running a speakeasy here. This is a business. We're talking about taxpayers' money.
Counselor, $600. Counselor. Let me, let me, let me, let me just give a clarification.
No, submit a proper invoice, bottom line, period, with receipts, period. I'm not here to give out money based on I know you. That's not what I'm doing.
Counselor, that's not true.
That's what you doing.
Counselor, that is not accurate.
These are receipts that is reflected on these AP lists. These are receipts, these are inaccurate receipts.
Okay, the vote, the vote is on, the vote is on the floor.
You can't just give somebody money based on inaccurate receipts.
Counselor, if you were to.
Because they're not, you can't do that.
Counselor.
You're not being responsibly responsible.
The account payable summary list.
You're not being responsible.
For this month is $1,021,908.50. A million dollars of bills here, and you're splitting hairs on a woman that came, did the work, bought her stuff.
Are you serious?
Yeah, we are splitting hairs.
That's a duty.
Yeah, we are absolutely splitting hairs.
You had an obligation to be physically responsible.
Counselor.
I don't care if it was a penny, no. Come on, you're playing with other people's money, no.
There's a motion, there's a motion on the floor. I need clar, I need clarification. Is the amount, is the amount of the motion $500 or $400, or is the motion being tabled?
She, what you're saying by my standards and asking.
I have questions on the motion.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, and excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. In order, in order for you to speak, people have to hear you. So please, ladies and gentlemen, we have a counselor on the phone who's trying to communicate. What are you saying, ma'am?
Okay, thank you. If it happens to try to make this as fair as possible, the lady was there. She's charged $50 an hour to serve. She was there for at least two hours on the 29th, which I can attest to. She was there, I believe, for three hours on the 30th.
Why are you begging for this moment to be paid?
Oh, we didn't change.
So, so Madam, Madam Vice, Madam Vice President, is, before the motion is read, is your motion, are you saying that you now would like the amount to give her partial payment of $250?
I have a question. I have a question. Who hired her?
The Counselor, the Counselor Johnson was not understood to be there at all. This lady was, was, was hired to do.
Oh, she said, that's not true. She said, that's not true.
I can't hear what's happening, but my question is, who hired her?
Please, please, please.
Who hired her?
What are you saying?
Listen, so listen.
If the, if the audience can't hear her, then we can't, then she probably shouldn't be on the phone, because let me tell you this.
She has.
I came here, I have come here for three meetings and I am present, so I should be heard as well. My question is, who hired her? Who hired her with no instruction? Mr. Dotson says he did not hire her.
True, that's, no matter, I have, excuse me, no, she's not lying. The issue is, to be off, no, the issue is, there was a meeting, we discussed it, the budget, according to me, what I spoke about, and you may fire me, but it was $1,000. The meeting cost, it's $1,000 for the reception. It, because of conversation, it mushroomed into this amount that we're talking about now. That part is the truth. I agree that she should come on at a $1,000 budget. That was my agreement. How it got from $1,000 to where we are now is between other counselors, not the borough manager.
And not me.
By other counselors, that's not me. Can we take the vote or?
There's a motion on the, there's a motion on the floor, please, as a secretary, to give her partial, partial payment of $250.
I thought it was $500.
She's, the person who, Counselor Johnson, Counselor Johnson made a motion, she changed the amount of her, the amount of money to her motion, it is now $250. I would like to ask for a vote by the.
I have a question, I have a, I have a question. So my question is, that Counselor, Counsel President, the Counselor Johnson said that she would attest because she was there with her, but Counsel President just said Counselor Johnson wasn't there.
I didn't say Counselor Johnson wasn't there, that's not what I said. She was not, she's not a part of.
Did I hear the same thing y'all heard?
No, you did not. No, you heard wrong.
She wasn't supposed to be there, okay, so we can't verify whether this woman was there or not. I don't think that this should even be.
I don't know why you're talking out of order.
I'm not talking out of order, I, this is, this is not out of order. On, whenever there, there's a motion on the floor, no, there's a motion on the floor, and there are, there's opportunity for a question.
Acknowledged.
There's a motion on the floor and there's opportunity for a question.
You were not.
It wouldn't matter if I asked you to be acknowledged, you say no.
You are to be acknowledged each time, Counselor, and you're well aware of that.
Why don't we just table this?
Okay. There, there are, Sharon, Counsel Harris, his president, votes no against the, the partial payment. Counsel Vice President Johnson? Counselor Waters, please.
No.
Counselor Roeklau, please.
No.
Counselor Brooks, please.
Wait a minute, Counsel Brooks is yes?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Counsel Monroe?
No.
And Counselor Beatty?
No.
The motion, the motion fails.
The motion fails.
What is the?
Five to two. Thank you.
I have another question. Nah, go ahead. Were you here to say something?
She can't speak.
You have to wait till the end of the meeting.
You can't speak.
You might not.
It took so long, it's after nine o'clock, now you gonna wait to make a motion?
You approve the AP list.
No, I still have questions, I'm not done. Um, I'm not done. I'm, uh, my next concern is are these Carl Ewald invoices here that we're paying for? So I'm just a tad bit confused. I have here that, and this may be more of a legal situation, I'm not sure, I won't put, put any names out here, but I have down here, according to these invoices, that on several occasions, there had been telephone calls with Counsel President regarding Concerned Residents, that Concerned Residents, um, organization, I'm assuming it's an organization. So we have several days that he had telephone communications with Counsel President personally, also with the Concerned Residents Attorney as well, and I'm just a little confused because Carl Ewald was voted in to represent the borough, not the Concerned Residents. But I have several invoices in front of me reflecting tax dollars being paid for him to have conversations with that particular organization. And it is especially concerning to me because Counsel President, you are a member of that organization, and that smells like a conflict of interest all day. Mr. Ewald represented the Concerned Residents prior to certain counselors getting on the floor. He represented them as members of the Concerned Residents. And now, Mr. Ewald was voted in by majority vote to represent the borough in this lawsuit, but all of these communications that our tax dollars is paying for seem to be just with the members of the Concerned Residents.
Oh, that's not.
And that's not good. That is a conflict of interest all day. I personally, as a resident, do not feel that I should, my tax dollars should be paid for an outside organization's representation. These people, tax dollars in this borough, should not be used for that. I have a whole list of all the members of this group, and at least three counselors are members in addition to another borough employee.
They didn't recuse themselves?
Why?
They were not, they did not recuse themselves when they voted for Mr. Ewald to represent the borough, and after they voted him in to represent the borough, it looks like the communications were taking place with members of the Concerned Residents. That's a problem. That's a problem. And whatever amount that he has on this AP list absolutely should not be paid, absolutely should not be paid.
Not by the borough.
Not by the borough, not by tax dollars. So, yeah, there are 20 members of this Concerned Residents, why don't they split the bill amongst themselves?
Counselor, I cannot verify the information that you have.
I can verify right here, I have the documents.
Counselor, Counselor.
These documents are public record. These documents are public record. I have the documents.
Give them to her so she don't have.
I mean, I'll share them with you if you promise to give them back. I'll share.
Well, Counselor, Counselor, I'm just going to say it to you very plainly, you are, you are mistaken.
I'm going to talk to the Pennsylvania Board of Ethics, and I'm going to find out whether or not I am mistaken. But this, right here, what I'm looking at, I think is borderline racketeering. Borderline racketeering.
Counselor, for the record, you are mistaken.
No, I'm not.
For the record, you are mistaken.
These invoices, and thank you, Mr. Ewald, for submitting your invoices to get paid, but no.
Counsel, Counselor, Mr. Ewald.
So I make a motion that we remove Mr. Ewald's invoices from the AP list. I second.
Yeah, I'd like to concern citizens, please.
I have the list of the members, the names of the members, and I also have these invoices. I'm not going to speak upon something that I do not have receipts for. I have the receipt, and I am willing to share the receipts, because I like to share.
Counselor, you are mistaken. For the record, you are mistaken.
There's no mistake.
There's a, there's a motion on the floor, you are.
What is the mistake? What's the mistake? Let's have, let's have the motion.
May I ask who, who made the motion?
I made the motion, Counsel Roeklau seconded.
Are there any questions? It's been moved and seconded, are there any questions?
There's a motion on the floor to remove Mr. Carl Ewald from the AP list. By, by name recognition, Counselor, President Harris.
The answer is no.
Counselor Johnson. Counselor Waters.
No.
Two on the list, two on the list.
They all recused themselves, they're on the list.
Counsel, Counsel Brooks.
Excuse me, yes ma'am, Counsel, no minute, Counsel Roeklau.
From the video.
Yes.
Counselor Brooks.
Counsel Brooks?
Counsel Roeklau, what was your vote?
Yes, to remove.
Counsel Brooks voted no.
She said no.
We got you, thank you.
Okay, Counsel Monroe?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to also say that there are four counselors who are here who are being personally sued in this matter, personally sued in this matter, and those are the same counselors that are voting.
That are on the Concerned Residents.
And they're on the Concerned Residents.
The motion passed.
What are they hiding?
The motion, ma'am, please, please. The motion fails for the three.
Don't get it twisted. Don't get it twisted.
Wow.
You see, you see all these smiles and giggles when they spending your tax dollars.
There's a motion.
See, and this is why it's a lot of discord, because it's your money, it's my money, it's all the residents of the borough.
Counselor, your out of order.
And this is funny to them, this is funny, but it will not be funny where the federal government get involved, because I'm absolutely going to find out whether or not this is appropriate, and I know for a fact that it's not. So Counsel, I don't, I don't think we should be. I don't think we need to be here for this AP list. No, no, you're right, we don't need to be here. No, because you're playing with people's money, so you're taking a stand.
Please, ladies.
Pay the bar. You have no bar, you have no bar, hey!
No, you don't have a bar.
No.
You walk out and the people can't get a stand.
You can't get a stand.
You can't get paid. You're irresponsible. You are irresponsible. And the people are not gonna get paid. And you're not gonna, the people are not gonna get paid. The police officers are not gonna get paid. Because you're walking out. You're walking out. And vendors are not gonna get paid. You're walking out. You're irresponsible and should not be.
We need to pay the bills, Counselor. We need to pay the bills, babe.
We're gonna let you know at the polls. You walk out, you walk out and the people are not paid. You walk out and the people are not paid. It is your fault, ma'am. It is your fault. It is your fault that the vendors are not being paid.
Mr. Nables, is payroll affecting?
If payroll is affecting, your vendors are affected. You should never be re-elected to this council with your irresponsible self.
I don't care. That's fine. I hate my job. I don't get to stay on without the payroll.
And everybody's feeling that you are a liar. And you are a liar. You are a liar. You are a liar. You are a liar. And you're disorderly.
Payroll is not gonna affect you. So payroll is not gonna affect you. The regular bill is.
The regular bills are affecting. And we have to pay interest and late fees. Don't tell people that.
Stop enveloping.
Stop, nobody's enveloping. Stop this, because you're being there just to take your love. And we just blew it for the third time, ma'am.
They should have been paid last week. Last week, when nobody was here. That's the problem. You're the problem, Mr. Ewald. You're the problem. You're the problem. You're the problem. The whole group. Your whole group. Lying, liars. You're liars. Keep the camera rolling. Gotta keep.
Is this man a jerk?
Ms. Roadclow.
I'm gonna go, it's all down there.
I know, Ms. Roadclow.
At least not the people get paid.
Please, we have vendors that are paid. We're already a council, ladies. Thank you so much. It's not a joke.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
We are asking for a motion to approve the AP list for A. If the motion is made, I would like to have a vote by name, please. Please.
Yes.
For, excuse me, let me ask the name first. Counselor President Harris.
Yes, the President.
Counselor Johnson. Counselor Waters.
Counselor Waters.
Counselor Roadclow. Counselor Roadclow. Counselor Roadclow.
Does the motion pay bill?
Yes.
For A.
No, this is a motion to approve the AP list. That's the motion.
Yes.
No.
No, 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 you ain't gonna see it. Come on, they trying to use trickery again.
They trying to trick you.
Trying to use trickery.
No, you trying to trick. Tricks, tricks. It's to pay the wrong invoices.
It's to, yeah, pay yourself. To use taxpayers' money to pay your personal mortgage.
To pay? No, we can't walk out when it's not set.
Well, amend the AP list to remove all the.
I have Ms. Brooks.
Anybody, is Counselor Brooks?
Yes, she's on.
Madam Brooks?
Madam Brooks. Counselor Brooks?
Is Madam Johnson to approve the AP list? No, two, I'm asking before, yes or no? Thank you.
Yes.
Madam Brooks?
Yep, Counselor Brooks, the motion to approve the AP list, your vote.
Yes.
Yes.
The motion passed.
Okay, so you offer, and since it's been voted on.
Wait a minute, wait, wait, wait. Wait. You have another consideration. Excuse me. Cash balance, and you must consider this resolution from the engineer to pay for infrastructure approvals that has a time-sensitive date on it.
So move.
Because we had the meeting on March sixteenth.
Stop, girl. Stop yelling in here. You're the yeller.
Here's a motion. Here's a motion on the floor for cash balance. By name, please, Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson. Counselor Waters.
Yes.
Counselor Roadclow.
No, I don't trust none of this.
Counselor Brooks, please.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Monroe?
She's right here.
She ain't up here.
Okay, the motion has passed. The motion passes for the cash balance.
Okay, now, consideration to approve the sale of the 2022 delinquent taxes. Where we get the money upfront from a collection agency and they build the resident.
So move.
By who? Who was it? Who was it, Ms. Waters, who was it? Thank you, Counselor.
Who gave the second?
Who's second? Thank you, Madam Johnson.
Counselor Johnson's second.
By name, please, Counselor, Madam President.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. And Counselor Waters?
Yes.
Counselor Roadclow?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Monroe.
She's not on the floor.
You didn't say Counselor Waters?
She did.
Well, you got it, okay. Thank you, okay, thank you.
Counselor?
Beatty? Yes.
Thank you. The motion passed for sales tax.
Okay, yes. A consideration for awarding the 2023 road program projects to A.F. Damon, contingent upon the execution of the contract and supply to required bonds for insurance. That's infrastructure repairs. So move.
I'll second.
Who moved this on whom?
By myself.
Second by Counselor Johnson. By name, please.
Any questions?
Any questions? Hearing now, by name, please, President Harris.
Yes.
Vice President Johnson. Counselor Waters?
Yes.
Counselor Roadclow?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
And Counselor Beatty?
Yes.
Okay, the tax collector's report that was submitted in your package of the taxes that were collected by a tax collector.
So move.
Who said that, Ms. Waters?
Yes.
Who's second?
Second.
Do better, it was, not the chair.
Okay.
It's gonna happen.
Give me a, give me a second, Ms. Counselor Brooks.
Is the question on the floor?
Are there any questions with regards to tax collector's report?
No.
No questions, hearing now, all in favor? Roll call, please.
Thank you, President Harris.
Yes.
Vice President Johnson. Counselor Waters, please.
Yes.
Counselor Roadclow, please.
Yes.
Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Thank you. And Counselor Beatty?
Yes.
Thank you.
The consideration to approve, item nine B, consideration to approve the community improvement program application. Dealing with infrastructure parks and recreation.
So move.
Thank you. Can you please, Madam President, repeat the motion?
Yes, consideration to approve the community improvement program application involving our community parks and other developments.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Counselor Waters, who seconded you? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. It has been moved to second.
Are there any questions? Yes, there are questions. This community improvement program application is flawed, severely flawed. First and foremost, it doesn't have anything on it with respect to an income criteria. The three-year residency that's on this application makes absolutely no sense whatsoever because if you've been living in the borough for three years, that mean you basically just purchased your home. Code should have been out there already prior to the purchase, doing whatever reviews they needed to do. If there was any problems with dilapidated structure, so forth and so on, it would have been pointed out at that point in time and taken care of before the actual sale was completed. So that's a problem. There's nothing in here with respect to how the selection of applicants. That's the problem. I wanna know, how are the applicants gonna be selected? Who's gonna be? There should be a committee, a neutral committee, and we should have a criteria, a list of criteria written down so we know absolutely there's not gonna be any favoritism, homiism, and all that. Also, we need to define exactly what falls under facet. Because it says something in here, you can improve either your driveway, improvements to your driveway, or make cosmetic facet.
Facet.
Facet, so, okay, I'm sorry, facade. Yeah, I went to Philadelphia Public School.
I did too.
So it's not in here, it's not defined. So the big thing here is income criteria, because the way this application is laid out right now, basically anybody and everybody can apply for it, and that makes absolutely no sense to me. So I make a motion to table this community improvement program application so that we can sit down at the table and review and include everything that I just mentioned.
Madam President, may I speak?
Yes.
Madam President and Counselors, this improvement program was an answer to the outcry that the driveways were in dire need of repair, that there were people who definitely didn't have the money to do it. This program is in action in Sharon Hill as we speak, and this, this application has been in the hands of counselors for at least three weeks. Three weeks. I could have received this information two weeks ago, made modifications, asked other, if other counselors had called in to me, we could have made my, to come to, excuse me, ma'am.
Miss me with all her rhetoric. I'm talking about it right now. These are the flaws, and I put a motion on the board and table. So all that extra you talking right now is irrelevant. It's irrelevant.
I have a question, is there anybody gonna be exempt? Like, if you have family members, are they exempt? Are you gonna be exempt?
As a matter of fact, we have a third, we have a third party from, we have a third party we'd like to hire from ARC, who are over. Who are.
Part of the stimulus money.
Why you keep cutting him off?
People be crying about, I'm gonna have to pay them.
Well, first of all, I didn't say that's what I was asking the question for. I asked the question, who would you send?
No, Counselor asked that question, I'm now answering the question.
Yeah, I didn't.
Feeling that, but ladies and gentlemen, for the sake of time, if this is not a motion that you feel is inappropriate because you did not have enough time to review it and you have questions, please, I will, just tell me what you want me to do.
I said a motion to table.
Madam President? There's a motion to table.
Second. So let's.
Excuse me, excuse me, who first, who made the motion?
Leona Roadclow.
Thank you, Ms. Roadclow. And who second?
Nicole Beatty.
Ms. Beatty?
Ms. Beatty, you second both the motions?
I know. But, viewpoints being raised here, we can't welcome this, not against it at all, but there are some things we need to work on. I'm not against it either, as a matter of fact, it was my, I'm the one who brought up the idea and used the ARC monies to help the residents. But they did not ask me to come to the table to help create this application.
Have you done this at the workshop?
Yes, yes. So by vote, so by the motion, the motion to table, I need names. Counselor Harris?
No.
Counselor Johnson? Counselor Waters?
No.
Counselor Roadclow?
Yes.
Counselor Brooks?
No.
Counselor Monroe's not here, and Counselor Beatty?
Yes.
It was a tie.
Now, you do break the tie. He wants to. Exercise your duty.
Yes. The motion has been tabled.
Let's talk about this at the workshop and then come back.
Yeah, I'm not against it, I just want more discussion.
Right, thank you, ma'am.
Anything else you want to wonder?
One more, one more.
Any others wondering? Consideration for Simeon Summers, a full-time code enforcement, and also, most important, as important, it's a recommendation from our chief for the part-time parking enforcement officers. The consideration of hiring George O'Tess as a part-time parking enforcement officer, consideration of hiring George Brainer as a part-time parking enforcement officer, and consideration to hire Craig Lewis as a backup as needed. Park, top parking enforcement officer.
Okay, so.
Hold, may I ask, the motion due by Ms. Waters? And by Ms. Johnson, and that's for part, that's for me to read it?
Yes, me to read is three. O'Tess, Brainer, Lewis.
By name, please, Counselor Harris?
I have questions.
Question?
Yes. Chief DiMarco, are these your recommendations?
Yes, and they were vetted and background.
Okay, that's all I need.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Madam Vice President? Counselor Waters?
Yes.
Counselor Roadclow?
Yes.
Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
And Counselor Beatty?
Yes.
And that's all for the summer, full-time code enforcement officer. Okay, tabling on this agenda.
No, that was not for Mr. Summers. No, that's not what we voted for.
Yes, she did.
No, it was for.
It was Summers first.
No. Well, Mr. Summers is not for parking enforcement.
No, but he's hired for code enforcement.
She mentioned him first.
Okay, so. But we wasn't providing, we wasn't providing his application. We wasn't provided his application, we was provided the other individuals for parking enforcement, but we wasn't provided the application for the code applicant.
We don't, we don't put out applicant, the chief, the chief gave us the applications and we put that online, but we don't put applications online, we put resumes online.
No, 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 you're misunderstanding.
No, ma'am, I'm not.
Yeah, yes, sir, you are.
No, ma'am, I'm not.
Yeah, you are.
No, I'm not.
I received applications, I received three applications for the parking enforcement officers.
I, I, I'm talking, like.
You want me to get up and go?
No, get it together. Get it together.
I don't want it, no.
Okay, so bottom line is. See, the bottom line is, we're picking and choosing the applications that's being shared with all of council. Because I received the applications for the parking enforcement officers, but I did not receive the application for this code enforcement officer.
You're right, but if you looked, you didn't see resumes for the parking authority, the parking meter reader guys either.
I made the same resumes, I sent the application.
I understood you, ma'am, you don't have to talk to me that way. I understand everything you're saying. I'm saying to you, with the application, you did not receive resumes.
You don't get the. I don't. I received applications. I don't, I received applications, I received their applications, but I did not receive Mr. Summers' application, that's what I'm saying.
I do understand.
So why are we only getting certain applications and not all?
If you look back, you will not see applications. You will not see applications for code, you will not see applications for public works, you'll see resumes.
I didn't even see a resume for Mr. Summers.
Yes, so Mr. Summers is online, we put his like, three days, four days ago.
Online?
To counselors, man, to counselors. They have no way to ask for an approval, but here, but I said.
Listen, it's okay, come on, come on, let's finish, let's finish.
Is this, man, can we make, since she's conceding, can we make this part of the original motion?
No, just go ahead, go ahead, come on, because y'all giving me a headache right now with all this swamping, lying, and cheating and stealing, it's too much for me to take.
All right, hold on, hold on, Counselor.
Summers and two meter readers. Parking enforcement officers, three meter, three, thank you, man.
Okay. Okay. Make sure I don't miss anything here. I think we did.
No, you have to, there's a motion.
In a minute, okay, but, in the interest of the neighbors and us, I want the consideration to approve the January and February minutes, January 19, 2023 legislative meeting minutes, are there any corrections, deletions, or additions to those minutes?
It needs to be amended, the citizens, the citizens, it should not be amended, it never had been, and I don't know why our reports keep coming through with that stuff.
I'm gonna move that, oh, you wanna take, that's not doing, I'll move that, oh, about that.
There is a motion here, that needs to be motioned, that is the Yaden Borough County Resolution of Yaden Borough, amending the Yaden Borough zoning code.
That's not time sensitive.
No, but we can do it, we're here, get it, knock it out, you may not have these folks next month. Consideration for adopt the Delaware County Hazard Mitigation Plan Resolution, let's just do them all.
So moved.
These resolutions are five, three and four years old, give it to me.
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Is, is there any objection to doing A, B, and C of the manager's report together? Does anybody have any problem with this?
No.
The vote couldn't be different?
No, no difference.
Okay, let's, let's vote on nine, A, B, and C altogether.
The motions are as well, consideration, just a moment, to adopt the Delaware County Hazard Mitigation Plan Resolution. A, B, consideration to approve the community improvement program application, that was already, that was already done, so, scratch B. C, consideration to adopt the resolution for the amendment of the Yaden Borough zoning code, extremely important, so we don't get recreational marijuana at 500 Church Lane.
So moved.
Consideration to adopt resolution for the amendment of the Yaden Borough zoning code, it's moved and.
Who moved, ma'am?
I moved.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor.
Moved and promptly settled.
By who, ma'am?
Council, please.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, by voice, by, by.
I have a question, I have a question.
Go ahead.
With respect to the consideration to adopt the resolution for the amendment of the Yaden Borough zoning code, shouldn't we be more specific with respect to what we're asking to consider?
Mr. Box.
Mr. Box, I'm asking Mr. Box, because the record have to be accurate, this is not telling us anything, consideration to adopt the resolution for the amendment.
We, we, we.
Can I, can I have my time to ask the question? And have an answer?
I'm sorry, Counselor.
Now, Mr. Box, should we be more specific with re- with respect to what we want to amend in the Yaden Borough zoning code?
It was advertised and published in the Borough Hall since March the ninth. I sent it to all of counselors, I sent both resolutions, the, the amendment to the definitions of the zoning code, and where the definition, where the new sections would go within our new zoning code, that's what this is.
This relates to the medical marijuana, correct?
That is one of many things in the, in the code, yes, in the new, in the amendment. There's methadone clinics, there's recreational, there's medical, there's, yeah, there's a bunch of things involved.
So what I'm saying is, with respect to this motion, shouldn't this motion reflect exactly what we're amending? That's what I'm asking.
So, the, the process to reflect exactly what we're amending, there's been copies in the front of Borough Hall for the public, this was circulated three weeks ago, so any, that, that's as specific as we can get. It's been advertised in the paper, it's been given out to the public, it, I don't.
But, I don't think you understand what I'm saying, so if I look at the, if I look at these minutes next month, and it says consideration to adopt the resolution for the amendment of the Yaden Borough zoning code.
The, the minutes are gonna have.
Motion passed, let, let me finish, and it says, the motion passed, okay? I don't know what actually the motion was, to amend what.
The, the entire resolution, the signed resolution by, by President Harris is gonna be in the minutes.
It's gonna be in the minutes.
I would imagine it would be a part of the minutes, if we pass this resolution on this date.
Do the resolution have some sort of, uh, name?
Yeah, it'll have, no, it has a number at the top, I don't know which.
Okay, well, shouldn't that number be reflected in this motion?
Well, this is the agenda, if you're saying the agenda's deficient, I mean, maybe, okay.
Uh, considerate, no, I'm talking about the motion. It's the motion, you have to be clear on the motion. Listen, you can't speak for me, because guess what, you, you can't even stand next to me. Now, cut it out. What needs to be reflected in this motion, what needs to be reflected in this motion is the actual resolution, the number, that's what I'm saying.
Can you add the resolution number, please?
So when people looking up, they can see a resolution, whatever, whatever.
I agree, I agree, Councilor Rowclow.
So let it, let.
Doesn't have to. The resolution to reflect that resolution number, I agree with Councilor Rowclow.
Yes, so listen.
May I vote, please?
Come on, you don't match my intelligence, cut it out, just cut it out, just cut it out.
Okay, Mr. Dodson gonna make that, that decision, thank you, thank you. We're gonna.
The resolution number, yes, please improve.
Yes.
Okay, so then we got this one, by.
With the vote, with the vote on.
By, by, President Harris.
Okay, what is the resolution number?
The motion is to motion for the zoning resolution 2023.
Yes.
2023.
Yes.
A resolution of Yaden Borough Council amending the Yaden Borough zoning code is one. Also, Delaware County Hazard Mitigation Plan Municipal Adoption Resolution 2024.
Indicate the, indicate the number.
You see it in them?
Now, now, that is, that is the motion, I will ask by name, Counselor, President Harris.
Yes.
Thank you, uh, Council Johnson, Vice President Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you, uh, Council Waters.
Yes.
Thank you, uh, Council Rowclow.
Yes.
Thank you, and Councilor Brooks.
Yes.
Councilor Bee.
Yes.
Is unanimous. Both resolutions passed.
Anymore?
Uh, you did the, so you did the, you did the, yeah, they're all done. Um, uh, we're postponing the consideration of hiring a new webmaster, if I may, yes, uh, that, that will be at our, there, there's an opportunity to have the presentation on Zoom from all three vendors that have applied for this work. So, you can do it on Zoom rather than having all of them come out.
Will that be available to the residents, the Zoom?
The council, right?
Presentation.
It's for council.
Then how do we get to do input with our citizens forum if we are not getting information?
So, I, well, I'm a little confused, because two of those vendors responded to me, and they absolutely were able and willing to come to the workshop to, uh, present the entire community with their proposal and open up themselves up to any questions. I have an email stating that. Two of them said they would do it.
So is that all around?
What you mean, was it all around? What you mean, was it all around?
Is that authorized?
Is that what?
Is that authorized, is that good with?
Yes, we, that's with the Counselor person and Counselor, she is right. You are to, why, why, what is it on?
So they'll be at our next workshop?
Quad Jam and Mr. Yon Drew.
Okay.
The court, the court of reversion.
The Ruda, thank you, ma'am.
And Vida, Vida.
So it's gonna be all.
If one person can just speak.
Go ahead, yes.
Thank you.
So.
Three of those, all three of these webmasters came here to the Borough, made the presentation to Mr. Dodson, to Ms. Johnson, and to myself. They, and then, stop, stop, stop. And then we, and then we gave, gave their proposals in great detail to all of the counselors for review, they've had them all month, or at least three weeks of this month. So they've had them, they've had them to review, but there's still questions, there's still outstanding questions as to how does this work and, and how can I understand it better?
When do the residents get the seat for?
Excuse me, stop, stop. The next, the next point was, if counselors who have to make the decision to hire the webmaster to redo our website and, and handle all of our social media platforms, that they, they want to ask more questions, so the question became, do you have them come back? It's still an open question, as Council Rowclow, we discussed it a week ago, in, in a meeting here, do you have them all come back and present to the, the full seven-member council in a executive session or what have you? Or, can you do a Zoom where they can interact and, and show you what they've done, and show you what, to save time, save money, and you may be able to open that up, uh, to the general public? I don't know, those were the two recommendations, and what Counselor Rowclow is saying, I'm in a hundred percent agreement with them coming and making that presentation to all of the counselors. So it's not a situation where Mrs. Johnson or myself or Ms. Johnson or anybody else has said, okay, this is how it's gonna be, this is what we have. So, uh, the cost is not cheap, the finance director said that we have some other line items we'll be able to pay for, it's not cheap to get it re, completely reinvented and, and up and running, you know, in, in the way that we want to represent the town. So, so that's, so there's time to see if they come to the, the, to the workshop, certain counselors are here, I think it's a broader reach if you do a, um, if you do a Zoom where these people can explain what they do. Uh, one, one, one vendor, the lady's a computer engineer twenty years, firm, does it for a lot of big companies, could do it for us. The other lady, uh, done it ten years, has a degree in computer science, uh, she has a very well-established lot of business that you can read this. Uh, the other gentleman, he's been in it thirty years, he doesn't have a staff, but the other people have staffs, so it's all to be, both of the questions that you want to ask.
So.
And may you ask the residents or any counselor, if they have a webmaster that they consider to be qualified for this position, that they come on, suggesting to me, we'll have them there if they're willing on money.
Jennifer Ha, the first, the first one. How communication?
Why not?
How, how come you're willing to pay? You fucking find it in your budget? How come you're funding the budget to hire someone to do social media? You can't find it in your budget to hire someone?
I asked Madam President, she can talk to the audience here, I've asked her now, you have, please, address me, yes or no, do you want more applications? No.
If you want more applications, then you should advertise.
Advertise the job.
No, it's not a council decision, if there's a job opening available, it should be advertised. If we're looking for professional services, it should be advertised, or we should seek out at least three or four, uh, 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 applicants for services. It should not be, counsel, if you know somebody, let me know, and we'll, and we'll have them come in, no, we're not playing that nepotism nonsense, we're not doing it. In addition to that, and it, I'm not done, I allowed you to speak, now let me speak. In addition, I would be hard-pressed to even want to hire any, uh, uh, webmaster at this point in time, because the same people who give the direction to the webmaster are the same, to the old webmaster that has all that propaganda on our current website, are going to be the very same individuals giving the instruction to the new webmaster. So, I would be hard-pressed, period. So until we change, no, until we change, I am correct, you still have those ten facts up there, you still have.
Mr. Yon is the webmaster that you're talking about, he's wonderful.
And you give him directions.
He is still working for us.
Why didn't you tell Mr. Dawn to delete the disruptions in the ten facts off of those web, that website right now? Why didn't you have him do it? He submitted an invoice, he submitted an invoice saying, this is what he did in the month of March, he did this, he did that, some edits, edits, that mean you can delete, so why didn't he delete disruptions and all of that? No, because you didn't want him to, so I would not, I would not, I would not go for that end to webmaster, that's crazy in here, it's been crazy in here, Counselor, and he